I'd like to call the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee meeting to order. It's Wednesday, September 18th.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move to nominate Michelle Bailey as our chair for tonight's meeting. Second. All in favor?
So, David Plito had a work commitment tonight and Carrie was unable to attend. So I will act as chair. Do we have any citizens' comments tonight? Seeing none?
I do have one request to adjust the agenda, to move item 7B up to 4A above, under new business, so that our guest presenter, Dorothy Presser from the MAS C, can present the MAS C guidelines on the operating of board subcommittees, and then we will proceed with the agenda as printed.
Are there any objections to that move? Great, so we'll proceed. Would you like to come to the table or would you like to present from the podium? Great, come on up. Thank you, Dorothy.
I was asked to come here tonight to talk just a little bit about best practices around subcommittees. So I, there is a document that all of you have, subcommittee best practices, and I will just like briefly go through that, and if you have any questions, then you can let me know. Basically, subcommittees are a subset of the school committee, less than a quorum, which basically the job of the school committees that, or the subcommittee, is that it can make the school committee more efficient by doing some of the work outside of the regular meeting and then bringing that work back to the regular meeting. There are certain things to be aware of when you're thinking about subcommittees. They have to have, they should have very clearly defined roles and responsibilities so that they know what the work is that they need to be doing in relation to the full committee, and that should be defined by the full committee. Sometimes the committee will say, you know, the subcommittee charge for this year is, for example, a policy subcommittee to review the whole manual or certain sections of the manual, or it could be times at a meeting when a topic is referred to a subcommittee. For instance, we really need to be looking at our homework policy or creating a homework policy, so can the subcommittee do the research on that or take it on and come back to us with a policy recommendation? So it happens both ways, but it's important to ensure that the work of the subcommittee does relate to the full committee, is within the purview of the full committee, and that the relationship between the subcommittee and the full committee is clear in terms of reporting back and forth. Very often, there'll be a section of the agenda of subcommittee reports, so if there are any reports that can be appropriate, appropriately put before the full committee. Subcommittee can never make any, take any actions on its own, it's basically making recommendations back to the full committee. That sometimes committees will ask, you know, what subcommittee should we have? And that's very specific to the committee. You can imagine that a committee that is nine people, more people, is going to have more subcommittees than a smaller committee, where more of the work can easily be done at the table. But the most typical subcommittees are probably policy, budget, and facilities. Sometimes budget and facilities is the same subcommittee. Negotiations in a, you know, in a time when you're negotiating collective bargaining agreements is also a pretty typical subcommittee to have. Generally, subcommittees are created at the organizational meeting. The subcommittees that exist may be in policy, but populated, and may be given a charge at the organizational meeting of the full committee, so that most policies around subcommittees say that the chair appoints the subcommittee with the consent of the full committee, and the charge again would come from the full committee to the subcommittee. Subcommittees are public bodies required to follow the open meeting law, so meetings need to be posted, minutes need to be taken. Sometimes we get questions about what if a school committee member who is not on a subcommittee would like to attend a subcommittee meeting? It's an open meeting, the public can attend, so a committee member who is not on the subcommittee can attend the meeting, but they must attend as a member of the public, meaning that they don't sit at the table and participate as though they were part of the subcommittee. They sit as if they were a member of the public and can address the subcommittee with the permission of the chair of the subcommittee. Make sense? So, that's a really quick overview of what's in the package. Do you have any questions or anything that I didn't address that you might want to address?
So, you have these model policies in here, but those are not our policies.
No, those are not your policies. You, you, in your bylaws, yeah, in your bylaws, you do have, in fact, I pulled them out, that, you call them working groups, if it walks like a duck and quacks like a duck, it's a duck. "Special working groups may include committee members, may be organized with the approval of the committee to advise the committee, but shall not determine policy or act without the authority of the committee. Working groups shall be authorized annually with specific charge. Special working groups must comply with the open meeting law." So that's basically what it says in your bylaws about working groups or subcommittees.
And is it good practice to come together with a consensus so that whether, you know, the chair agrees with it or not, you know, depending on what you decide in the subcommittee, then that, the chair would bring that forward of this subcommittee slash working group to the full school committee?
So, the subcommittee either would vote or would produce minutes of the discussion or the decision, so that, just like we talk about when you're, you know, you're a committee, you can only act as a committee, a subcommittee can only act as a subcommittee. An individual member couldn't go off and act on behalf of the subcommittee without the subcommittees giving that person permission, authority to do that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so the whole group would have to agree for one person to go do it, not just one person out of the group to say, yeah, go off, do this. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that, yeah, you know, you would work with the majority, the same way.
Yep.
The other, you know, if you think about the open meeting law too, if you have a two-member subcommittee and one member can't make it, you can't meet, right? Because that's not a quorum.
Yep.
If you have a three-member subcommittee, you need at least two people to be there to be able to meet, because you wouldn't have a quorum.
So if, if the subcommittee has been given authority by the full school committee or a charge, can they then appoint individual members to be liaisons to other groups or to do specific things without bringing it back to the full committee?
I would think they'd be far better taking that back to the full committee to get the full committee's consent. To me, that would be acting as a subcommittee and making a decision as a subcommittee without bringing it back to the full committee. I would think it would need to go back to the full committee to say, you know, the subcommittee recommends that this person be liaison to X group. I mean, part of the reason for making sure that the subcommittee has a specific charge, sometimes if they don't, I've seen in the past, subcommittees that kind of decide to go off and pursue topics that might not be the will of the full committee, and that can be problematic.
Okay. And it also can be problematic when you're in a regional district, because you have, one town has one agenda, one town has another agenda, they want the school committee to play on their side, and so they might, you know what I mean? They want, in a three, in a three-way, sometimes two people are trying to get up on one side, so it's good just that everybody agrees how we're going to do it, so.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, well, you have the document and you know where to find me if anyone has any questions.
Thank you, I appreciate you coming out. You're spending so long, I think you've been here since four. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
All right, we have a request for a cross-country trip. Did you want to address this about it, or do you want us to just go through the motions? So why don't we have a motion and then you can inform us?
I move that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee approve the cross-country trip request as an exhibit, as in the exhibit, from Coach Steve Sawyer.
Is there a second? Second?
Second.
Thank you, Michelle. Go ahead.
So I just wanted to, before you start, Coach Sawyer, I asked Coach Sawyer to come, and our athletic director, Mr. Genualdo, is here with him, just so that you could hear directly from him about this exciting opportunity, and he can answer any specific questions that you might have. So thank you for being here, Coach.
This is the 11th year in a row that we have traveled to Rhode Island. The family was tried to stay on a beautiful facility, and it's right on the coast. Two things we try to accomplish, it's a social thing for the kids and the parents. Parents usually meet us down there, we have a great time. And for the kids, it's a chance to compete against literally hundreds of kids all over New England, and New York, and Connecticut, and New Jersey, and to real Iowa. We have races for freshmen, which is two miles, it's further than the freshman. We have JV racing, high speed racing, and we have championship races. For the kids who get down there, who in the K family or in Massachusetts, they don't have the opportunity to earn a medal, this is a place where they can get a medal. And for them, it's a real big, it's a big, it's a big thing, very, very big. And the other thing is, for those kids, boys or girls, who want to compete at the collegiate level, it puts them on the radar. College coaches all over New England, all over the East Coast are looking at these things, they're looking at the time, they want to figure out the paces, and they say, hey, that's somebody I want to go after, and they end up on somebody's recruiting list. And then they might end up in a college situation where normally without that challenge, you know, a kid ain't. So that's good from a math perspective, so the needs of all the kids are met. Also, for me as a coach, I get a chance to assess my teams and my individuals early in the season, the training's effective, and if I have to change any training based on what the paces are and how they handle, how they handle the scene. But it's basically a, it's a fun time for everybody. We've had great success there over the years, and we expect to do the same thing. Michelle's daughter, Olivia, was one of the top performers there when she was a senior, and she received a medal, and maybe it put her on recruiting, I don't know. Those are the big, big, important things that happen with us. But for me, it's really a social time for the kids. They hang out, they meet other kids from all over, and parents get a great job.
And we wouldn't really even be approving this, except for you have to cross the state line to do it. Like, if it was in Massachusetts, you could just do it, right? Yeah. So, yeah. Yeah, so this is fantastic, so.
Yeah, it's a great opportunity.
Are there any additional questions for Coach Sawyer?
No, I think it's a great opportunity.
All right, seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Unanimous? Congratulations, good luck.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Coach.
Great, so the next one is, we have a request to allow the soccer boosters to fund an assistant coach, so if we take a motion and then we can get some information.
I move that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee approve a booster-funded assistant soccer coach.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Michelle. Do you want to provide us with any information? I think we've done this before, correct?
Yes, and last year, we actually did it for the individual who so far has won championships of all careful football teams, but this provides an opportunity, this particularly for the guys who want to pitch their targets as well, to develop and create new, big ball progress. The kids love them, and they need an extra set of eyeballs, and you need an extra set of eyeballs to get better team kids.
So are the funds coming to the district and the district's paying the stipend? Yes.
Yeah, so, if it's approved, if we're lucky enough to have it be approved, they'll probably give the check to me and I'll make sure that they get it, and then once that happens, they have to go through, the coach, but it's a coach in general, kind of goes through the normal stuff that are paid for, you have to go through. Again, they already have their corporate fingerprints, they, the country's got CP along this, they just have to.
Thank you very much. I'll let you know if there's any issues.
Great.
Is there any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? That's unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Genualdo, for coming tonight.
Yeah, and thank you to the generosity of the boosters as well, because that's a fantastic thing.
Yes, thank them.
All right, thank you. Our next item on the agenda is the eighth grade field trip. We can have a motion and then we can discuss it.
I move that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee approve the eighth grade field trip to Washington, D.C.
Second.
Okay. Are there any questions about this field trip? I know it's been going on for several years.
I had the chance to chaperone one of these. It's a fantastic experience for the kids when I was teaching civics in the middle school. It's just a fantastic opportunity for the kids to see our institutions, our government up close, participate in some educational activities down there.
Okay, and does the staff receive any additional stipend for going on this trip? Do we know that?
I don't think that they do.
There's not.
Right. So, I'll just, I just continue with my concern that we are asking middle school students to spend $1,000, and they don't really have, they're not 14 yet, they don't have the opportunity to earn that money, so we're putting the burden on their parents. And if it's superly important, it seems like we should be able to contribute something besides the. And if it's superly important, it seems like we should be able to contribute something besides the chaperones. Do we cover the cost of the adult chaperones?
The students do, I believe, the whole cost.
So the student cost covers that, yeah, so.
Are there scholarships available for those that can't?
Yes.
All right, so, any more questions? Anybody? All right, so, um, all those in favor? It's unanimous? Great, next, um, so, uh, the North Shore, we are a member of the North Shore Education Consortium. Um, they have a board of directors, somebody from the district, uh, needs to be appointed to serve on that board of directors. Uh, Dr. Harvey had done it in the past, um, so I believe we have been asked to appoint Dr. Kuchenberger to that position. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, if you want to, if you want a motion?
I move that the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee appoint, the annual appointment of, um, the superintendent or Dr. Kuchenberger to the North Shore Education Consortium Board of Directors.
Second? Thank you, Michelle.
So just to give a little background information, um, there are different types of consortiums in Massachusetts. Um, some, it can be school committee members on the board and/or superintendents or other designees. The, the North Shore Education Consortium is unique in that it's an all superintendent board of directors, so, um, it has to be the superintendent. I've had a chance to go to two meetings so far, participated in the budget adoption, they just negotiated a contract, and also, um, the evaluation of the, the director. Um, we reviewed that at our last meeting, and so it really is a great opportunity not only to, um, expand services and unique programming for our students, but also to connect with other superintendents in our area and share ideas. Um, at our last meeting, we were even talking about, is there opportunities for us to share some professional development if we have common goals that we're working on? So, um, I think it's an honor for us to be a part of the collaborative and, um, the consortium, and it, they really are doing some really unique programming for our kids.
And how often do you meet just of?
Once a month.
Once a month, yeah.
Fantastic. All right, um, anything else? All right, well, vote, um, all of those in favor of the motion to appoint Dr. Kuchenberger to the North Shore Education Consortium? Uh, that is unanimous? Fantastic. Uh, next item on the agenda is the interim superintendent goals. We had, um, some outlines of these presented at our last meeting, and so, do you want to just update us on where we're at now?
Sure, tonight I'm, um, requesting approval of these goals, um, with the idea that they're going to continue to be living documents, um, the key actions and benchmarks. I had the opportunity to formulate some of them, um, between our last meeting and this meeting. The one that is not, um, nearly as complete, and there's, you know, several other key actions that could be added here, it's just a matter of how much do I list? Um, but I wanted to give you a sense of, of where I'm going, and I will, like I said, I will continue to add things to this document, which you all have access to on Google, so you'll see it as it's growing. The first goal is really about the entry and the direction setting, so really, it's a lot of studying the district, and I outlined a few key benchmarks there that I won't read for you, and also linked the full entry plan, um, if you want to read that in its entirety, as I talked about at our last meeting. The second goal is about maintaining momentum, um, and there really are a lot of things that have happened with this, so it really comes down to just how much evidence, um, you would like me to compile as we think about that. But I think you've observed, uh, many, um, of the key actions and benchmarks as they've been going. So I tried to think of what you might not be able to observe as much, um, and really honing in on the educator evaluation process. I'm working with our, um, union president to deeply understand what had been done in the past and what's working well. I, I understand that there may be several opportunities for us to improve that process with, um, and we share a common goal in that we really want it to be a process that's meaningful and valuable and not just a compliance exercise. Um, so although there's many, many key actions currently going on and some benchmarks already hit in terms of maintaining momentum during this transition, that was one that I thought would be less visible to the committee, so I chose to highlight that here. For my professional practice goal, I continue to participate in the new superintendent induction program. I have a meeting with my coach on Friday, um, and have consulted her throughout this week just on a few different issues that have come up, and she's already proven to be a really valuable resource, um, for me, and the district, I would say. And then the fourth goal is that student learning goal, and this one is less complete than I would have liked to bring to you today, but that's really because it requires some collaboration from our leadership team, and I wa- didn't want to get too far down the road, um, without including them in the conversation. So I already have principals who are interested in defining some of these key actions and benchmarks. Um, and also, our, uh, Director of Special Services has been out on an intermittent leave, dealing with some family matters, and obviously she plays a critical role in weighing in on what, um, this goal might really flesh out to look like outside of me just studying and researching, um, what our current practice is. So those benchmarks will be brought forward once I'm able to collaborate more with our leadership team. And so again, um, my hope is that you would be willing to approve these goals tonight so that I can continue to work on them with the team.
Are there any questions?
I just want to point out that for an interim superintendent, you've had a lot to do, and pretty much a lot of it is the hiring of a lot of essential people, and you've done a great job.
Thank you.
And I, I don't think everybody knows how much hiring you've had to do, and not many superintendents have to come in and hire as many people as you did and put a team in place as quick as you did. And I think you've done a great job.
Thank you. It's been keeping me busy.
I agree.
Um, I am wondering, under goal two, uh, key actions, I'm wondering if, um, preparing a budget should be in there? And then a benchmark document would be the budget. Um, because that is one of the things that we need to be doing in the transition is continuing towards, uh, next year.
Yeah, good idea.
I think also, one of the things that I contemplated listing here was just the partnership and the team building that we're doing between the school committee and the, the superintendent, and I didn't know how, you know, if it would be redundant or not, but I could add that if you thought that was also a good key action or benchmark.
And may I continue on Stacy's comment and agree with everything she said, but also extend the thanks to Vinnie as well. He's in the trenches taking grenades as well.
And there will be more to come.
Yeah. So thank you both.
Vinnie's been doing a great job. I think the, the term is often baptism by fire, but I'm not sure if that really does it justice.
Did you see anything, Michelle, that stood out to you? No? Okay. Um.
You want me to make a?
We did not actually make a motion, we got the information first, so if you want to make a motion.
I move that the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee accept the, uh, Dr. Kuchenberger's superintendent goals, as stated, and adding, um, the budget as well into that as a goal.
School committee team.
Team, yeah.
And school committee team. And school committee team.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
Thank you, Michelle. We're ready to vote? Yes? Okay, all in favor? That's unanimous?
Thank you.
Now we have the consent agenda, so we can take a motion to accept, um, just, it looks like we only have warrants.
It's just once.
Okay.
I move that the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee, um, approve the consent agenda as is, there can be no changes.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
Thank you, Michelle. Um, all in favor of the consent agenda? That's unanimous? Um, okay, so, there are no minutes to approve, is that right?
No, hoping we can get those soon so we can catch up, because with that, we need it, you know, it's pretty important to get those approved within a month, just based on some of, you know,
Good standard.
Good standard protocol for any kind of.
Looks like we are going to go to, uh, working group updates. Uh, we've allocated ten minutes for Capital Finance Planning Committee. I know Jean is the chair, but, um, he's not here for two, you two are, Michelle and Stacy are members, so.
I, I do have, um, a consensus, and if you want to add to that, Michelle, um, we had a robust meeting last night, and, um, lots of work that was accomplished, and so we have a, a consensus for recommendations to our school committee. And, um, the recommendation is for the school committee to grant the Capital Finance Planning Subcommittee the authority to negotiate an MOU with the TIRF committee. Upon, upon the school committee approval, the MOU will be crafted by district legal and vetted with the TIRF committee. The TIRF committee will file a, excuse me, a 501(c)(3) paperwork and form a board. And then the recommendation, um, is also for the school committee to grant the Capital Finance Planning Subcommittee to work with the, to work collaboratively with the TIRF committee to update the project scope, sequence, and cost of the conceptual design. As well, the recommendation for the school committee to grant approval that the Capital Finance Planning Subcommittee to recommend, to appoint liaisons with the, uh, within our subcommittee with the Town Board of Selectmen and Capital Planning Group and FINCOMs. Our, um, our, our recommendations for the appointments would be Jean Lee to the Capital Planning Group, Michelle Horgan to the Hamilton Board of Selectmen FINCOM, and Stacy Maderneck to the Wenham Board of Selectmen FINCOM.
Okay, there's a lot there, Michelle, do you have stuff you want to talk about?
Do you want to take them separately?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Let's take them separately, so let's start with.
Do you want me to make a motion just for?
Well, why don't we start with the motion on the appointments, because I think that is going to be the easiest to just knock off.
Okay. I move that the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee, uh, grant the approval to the Capital Planning Finance Subcommittee to appoint liaisons with the Town Board of Selectmen and Capital Planning Groups and FINCOMs. Jean Lee to the Capital Planning Group, Michelle Horgan to the Hamilton BOS FINCOM, and Stacy Maderneck to the Wenham BOS FINCOM.
Can I speak to this just a little bit?
Second at first.
Oh, I'm sorry, second.
Great, thank you.
Then discussion.
Now we're gonna have discussion.
Um, so we talked about this at length, and we really felt that it's a great time for the school district to turn the page and connect, um, with Hamilton and Wenham as we both, as all three of us move forward in our budgeting process. Um, we discussed the pros and cons of sitting at the meeting, but really came to the resolution that it's probably the best to have someone there than not. And a, a view of transparency, um, and all of branches, Julie was saying. She is meeting with, called, we call it the big six. Um, the two town managers, Julie, Vinnie, and, um, the adminis- the financial administrators for the both towns. So it's just a great opportunity for us to really.
It's a unique position, as we talked about last night, where, um, there's a lot of new leaders, and it's a great way to open up that communication and move forward with the new set of eyes. I mean, with the new, uh, interim superintendent, we have new town manager and a new town administrator. And so, just if we can start working collaboratively, you know, this is part of our communication that the school committee had decided that we wanted to put forward to try and communicate better.
Did you want to continue what you were saying?
No.
I, I, there was, I wasn't sure if it was a pa- a short pause or if it was a button.
Sorry, it's fine.
Just checking.
Thank you.
All right, so we, um, have a motion, we have a second. Do, and we've discussed it, is there any more questions about it? All right, um, all in favor? Great.
Thank you for that, I think, um, it really supports the way Vinnie and I want to enter into the budget season, and that, I think, is going to serve us really well as a community.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, and like you were saying, Michelle, you can go to the meeting, or you can check in before the meeting, or you can check in after the meeting and just keep the communication open. I think it's a fantastic plan. Um, okay, then I heard MOU on the turf field, and I heard something else.
So, um, why don't we talk about the MOU?
Okay, let's do that.
And so basically.
First of all, can, for those at home, can you tell what MOU is?
Do you need a motion first and a second?
Yes, I think that would be a good plan, thank you.
I move that the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee, um, grant the Capital Finance Planning Subcommittee the authority to negotiate an MOU with the TIRF committee.
Second.
MOU is a.
Memorandum of understanding.
Memorandum, sorry, I was also, and I'm like.
So, not truly a contract, but sort of a guidelines of the norms that people will agree to.
And we had, um, co- put together in the past, this, um, we had taken on the turf field group. They had previously been running independently for several years, trying to figure out if we raise the money, can we then, you know, give it to the schools for turf field to help with that? And so, we, um, two years ago, we had brought the, um, brought the group on to the subcommittee, and, um, we had stopped, um, at a point where nothing was really moving on. And so now we decided, let's look at this again and get some momentum going, so this, um, so this understanding would be talking about advertising and fundraising, and what limits we would allow this group, because they felt like if we have a high-end, um, contributor, what are they going to be allowed to do? And so, what we like to do is move forward with some, um, giving some kind of, um, authority to negotiate this, um, understanding of what we can and can't do in fundraising for this group, so that they can move forward as well as then, once we get this approval, then they can then file their, um, 501(c)(3) paperwork.
And, and I think what's important is, again, partnering with a group of citizens to take the burden off of the taxpayers, um, to, to see that we are, again, we are looking for alternative ways, not just to hit them where, in their, in their pockets, so.
And the other thing I like about your plan is that it's going to be three people hashing out the details with the TIRF group, and wordsmithing it just amongst three of you. Will this then come back here, we'd approve this memorandum?
Once we have the final paperwork, it would come back again for another approval.
Did you want to add something?
Yeah, I, I think that, um, this is a really exciting opportunity and to create a public-private partnership that allows us to, as Michelle Horgan was saying, you know, find some creative funding sources to, to fund something that has become a critical need. I think that, um, part of this work is going to really be communicating with our community the state of our fields and our track. They have reached, um, a point in their life that they are getting to be beyond their useful life, and more, um, concerning for us, they are becoming very unsafe. So if you've walked our track recently, you'll notice that the, the top, that's supposed to be really spongy and supportive for all kinds of different running, um, events and activities, has become paper-thin, and in some places, there's even holes where it's right down to the blacktop. So obviously, that's a safety issue, if, um, a student or a community member were to be using the track and fall, they're going to, um, become injured in a way that they wouldn't if it was a safe track. It also really is a community investment. It gives us the opportunity to look at all of our fields across both of our communities and how much they're being used, not only for, um, high school and middle school athletics, but for some of our youth sports that go on in our community. And, um, really, what's, what we're noticing is that all of the fields are being overplayed and overused, which then makes them less accessible for community members who just want them for general recreation or just, um, you know, family events or other types of, of things. So, it really is a community project, and we're excited to have a group of parents who, and volunteers, who have really been at this for almost a decade now. It's really hard to find folks who can make that level of commitment over such a long period of time, and we're just trying to do our part and make sure that we can move this forward in a way that, um, is going to serve our students and our community well, but also that our, that our community can financially handle.
And I also think that this TIRF group should be commended. Um, a lot of these people, their kids have, are out of the system now, but they're still dedicated to our district and to our towns. So that's a huge, um, benefit for us, and all of us, so.
Yeah, especially when, you know, we didn't know that, you know, we could call them back and say, okay, here's what we're doing, without them saying, wait a minute, we've seen, we've been through this.
I think we've had a short shelf life with them, so we gotta act quickly, so.
So, um, let, so we have this motion, so let's go ahead and do this motion, and then we'll do that second motion, um, about the, whatever, the 503(c). Okay, so, um, the motion is to allow the TIRF group to negotiate memorandum of understanding with a group of private citizens that we're gonna call the TIRF committee.
Yes, capital two. Yes, capital T, capital U, capital R, capital F, just so, it's a group.
T-U-R-F capitals, okay. We've had a motion and a second, so, all in favor? Okay, that's unanimous.
We really appreciate that.
All right.
It was a lot of work and thought put into that.
And there is a third, my understanding is there's a third recommendation that has to do with the 501(c)(3).
So that was part of the first part. They will put together their 501(c)(3). They have, they have already have the information, it's all put together legally, it's a nice thick packet, I've already seen it, and they just need to file it, get their board of directors together. And we thought, if we can get all this together, and, you know, at the same time, and that's just kind of what you have to do for the fundraising part. And, so I don't know if you want that approval, or if you want to go...
I think that goes in the...
That goes with the MOU.
Yeah, I think that goes in there.
And so then, the other recommendation would be for, I would move that the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School Committee grant the Capital Finance Planning Subcommittee the authority to work collaboratively with this TURF Committee to update the project's scope, sequence, and cost of the conceptual design.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Michelle, a second did. I think we need some discussion to understand what that means.
Do you want to talk about it, Julie?
Sure. So, in 2017, I believe, we worked, partnered with the Gail Company or organization to develop a report that includes a conceptual design that shows the multiple phases that the project could occur, and it has pricing for each of the phases. Given that that was a couple of years ago now, we need to really update the scope of that, and there were some things that were nice to haves and some things that were need to haves, and so we really want to differentiate that in this update. And we're also looking for a better solution for the tennis courts locations. In the original plan, it showed them kind of off behind the middle school where the softball field and hardscape is. We're wondering if we can bring them closer to where the track is and the turf fields will be. So we're going to price that out and really get a sense of what that will look like. In addition to that, our new Director of Facilities, Tom Geary, is going to simultaneously be pricing out some options for ways to lead the project, and that will all be part of this conversation. And all recommendations, of course, will come back to this full committee. I imagine there even being a series of presentations that you'll see over the next several months.
And the tennis courts, just for some people's background information who haven't followed the whole time, it wasn't the original plan many years ago, but then, when questions were brought up, that it wasn't viable area where they put it in, because we would lose parking, we would lose how the buses are routed in and out of the area, safety concerns, and then also, an area of where the middle school hangs out, which is called, Michelle?
The cage.
It's not called that anymore, I recall.
So in our days, it was the cage. Anyways, so it just, we would take away more area that we couldn't really get rid of, and so that was pretty much just taken away, disappeared. And as we know, last year, the tennis families, coaches were very upset that it wasn't in anything, and we were going to look at all the other fields, but not tennis. And right now, there's a huge issue with, just so update with people, the tennis courts. I mean, right now, we're being, the kids are being bussed out to almost Amesbury, Raleigh area, which is very far away, and, you know, the team would like to be closer to its own home school. We haven't been able, we're having issues right now hosting any home championship games, which, there's been different sports, track, soccer, baseball, football. So, we really need to take a look at this.
And again, I think with new sets of eyes at the helm, it's important that, again, collaborate and take a look at it again, because it needs change. It's been two years.
Yeah, and I think, well, I shouldn't speak. I played tennis in high school. I think that was, that's something that not a lot of people realized went out, like, people had kind of thought it was in, so...
Well, and I think the bottom line for folks to remember is that, again, this is a need-to-have, not a nice-to-have, and so, we're going to have to repair the track and fields, they're unsafe. And so, it's either we're going to fund it solely through local tax dollars, or we can engage in this public-private partnership. So I think this is us being good stewards of our taxpayers' dollars.
So this, Peter, do you have anything you want to add? Just checking, okay. So, the motion is to allow the TURF group to sort of update the scope, and then that scope would be presented, that's...
But also, working with...
Who did I say?
The TURF.
TURF group. It's our Subcommittee.
Subcommittee.
Subcommittee with the TURF.
Subcommittee will be doing that.
Subcommittee, yes.
So, we're ready to vote? All in favor? Great. Congratulations, you've added a whole bunch of things to do.
Move everything forward.
We wish you well, and thank you for your service. Okay, so we have a first reading of the policy here. I am wondering if we want to do that, or I see Peggy sitting in the audience, and I wanted to know, do we want her to move up?
Sure, if you're willing to move Peggy up in the agenda, I would love to honor her time and get her in bed early tonight.
Is there any reason why we shouldn't do that?
No, I think that's a great idea.
All right, so we're going to do that. So, 8D is going to be next. Peggy, it says 60 minutes here for you. Okay, I was like, you speak awfully fast. I don't know if you're going to make the 60 minutes. But please try to feel free to speak so that we can follow along.
While Peggy's passing out some handouts, I'll just do a brief intro. I want to first thank Peggy, our Director of Curriculum and Assessment, Instruction and Assessment, or Assessment and Instruction, I always fumble up that title. But Peggy's job in our district is really to lead the strategy for all things teaching and learning. And in very short notice, I asked if she could give you sort of an MCAS primer, if you will, because currently, we, Peggy will speak more about this, but we've received our embargoed data. We, as district officials, have had a chance to start to look at it briefly, but we can't speak about it publicly yet, and you don't have another school committee meeting before it will become public. And so she's going to really build a little assessment literacy with you tonight. I've asked her to remind you how the test has evolved over the last several years, so that when that data does come out, you're ready to look at it in a way that allows you to stay really low on the ladder of inference and just notice and wonder about what it says and what it, what it might mean. And so I thank you, Peggy, for turning this presentation around in a very short period of time and balancing your time between, you know, your personal matters today and being here for us, so thank you.
Before you start, I just want to, so we've just been handed some information. Is this information that we can speak about? Okay, great. So, in here, we can ask you questions about it, because this is not stuff that's embargoed. Correct, great, thank you.
I can't hear you.
The TV person can verify that.
So, what I have for you tonight is basically looking at 2018 data, which is, thinking about like all of the reports that I presented to you tonight are actually...
We can hear her, we just want to be sure the TV audience can. Okay, thank you.
So, we're going to be taking a look at 2018 data, and through looking at 2018 data, we can kind of bring you your how you look at this data, so that maybe this data is, this one will release next Tuesday.
And all of the reports that I'm showing you tonight will be available on the state website. So anything in here, you could go on the state website right now and find all of these. So there's no problem with looking at this data. I just can't talk about the 2019 data, that's what's embargoed until Tuesday. But we wanted to kind of go through all of these to really help people to understand what do these reports mean, how do you interpret them, how do you kind of put them into a larger context, and what is it like to go through this data and to really analyze this data and what it means for our district and the types of decisions that we're making in the district. So, some of our objectives for tonight is to talk about how this whole process has changed. So the state is using a new test now called the Next Generation MCAS. MCAS came out originally like in the early 2000s, and it was the same for many, many years. And then we had the Common Core standards come out, and they felt that they needed to update the test to reflect that. There were also some changes to how the federal government was doing school accountability and the processes that were adopted by the states as a result. So what we find ourselves with in Massachusetts right now is a brand-new test, the Next Generation MCAS, which actually looks a lot more like the PARK than the old MCAS. So you may remember back in 2016 that the district piloted the PARK assessment, and that assessment was the national test on the Common Core standards. So the Common Core standards are standards that were adopted by most states, some have withdrawn in the meantime, but most states are still on the Common Core standards. And they decided if they were going to have common standards, that there should be a common national test as well, as opposed to every single community having its own test. So what ended up happening is that Massachusetts, there were two consortiums, Smarter Balanced and the PARK, and Massachusetts joined the PARK Consortium, and we thought that we were going to go with the PARK. So there was a year in which you could try it out if you wanted to, there was a second year in 2016 in which all districts had to try it out at K8, I mean, 38 really. And then, the state decided to withdraw from PARK, because there were some parts of PARK that the state didn't really like. One of the things was that PARK is a timed test, and the MCAS has always been untimed. And there were some other things that Massachusetts wanted to have some local control over. So they did withdraw from the consortium, but the test itself looks nearly identical to the PARK. So they've kept largely the same test, the same testing items, the format, so it's very different from the old MCAS, but it is, it does leave us some of that discretion at the state level that we wouldn't have had had we stayed with PARK. So we really want you to understand, how is this Next Generation test different from what they're referring to as the legacy MCAS, which is what we were used to before? The other thing that is new since last year is the accountability system in Massachusetts. So, it looks completely different than how it looked before. So the last time Julie was in Massachusetts as an administrator, we were talking about level schools, level one and level two, and that's all gone now. It's a completely different system, brand-new last year. And I did go through this with you last year, but it was a lot of information. So this year, we're going to go through it sort of more systematically and really have, you have an opportunity to look carefully at it. So when you have, you know, next week, when all of this comes out publicly, you as spokespeople for the school district can speak to any community concerns that might come out about our MCAS data, because you've kind of gone through these reports and you can think about what this data means and how you can compare it. So that's one objective for this evening. The second objective is to get us ready for the 19 data, 2019 data. And then finally, to experience the using data process. So, most school systems have a research-based process by which they look at data, there are several of them. We use TURC's Using Data Process. We've had our administrators trained in that, a number of our teachers trained in that process as well, and that's the process that we go through when we take a look at any sort of assessment data, and specifically, our accountability data and MCAS data. So you'll get a sense of what that's like this evening. So these are the changes, so you can kind of see how things have happened. 2015 was the last time that everybody, all the grade levels were on the legacy MCAS. So starting in 2016, 3-8, we were on the PARK, and we were still legacy MCAS in science and also at the high school. And then, starting in 2017, 3-8 moved to this Next Generation MCAS. So we've had two years of data at 3-8 in both math and ELA, and then this year, we added the high school. So this 2019 is the first time that the high school has been on this new test. The reason why the state did this, if you look at the 2017 for 3-8, and then we jumped to 2019 in grade 10, they wanted the kids, because it's high stakes at high school. It's high stakes for the district at all grade levels, but it's high stakes for individual students at the high school level, because their graduation depends on their success on that test. So they didn't want their very first time of encountering a test like this to be when it was high stakes. So they made sure that these same students had an opportunity to take the same type of test in eighth grade, so they've already had one experience with this test before they had to take it for high stakes. So that's why they've been phasing it in, and that's why the high school got delayed behind the eighth grade for a couple of years. Now the high school's on board, the last thing that they're working on is updating the science test. So this past spring was the first time they had the Next Generation Science Test for 5 and 8, and again, same principle, we're making sure that the kids had an experience with that in eighth grade. We actually test for science in ninth grade, so it's odd on these reports, they always say science 10, but I don't know of any school district that actually tests in 10th grade, it's always in ninth grade, and it's either physics or biology, and because we teach freshman biology to everybody, that's the test that we administer. So that's the data we're looking at. So the fact that the Next Generation MCAS occurred in science last spring means that this year's freshmen will have the experience of that high-stakes test on the Next Generation test, just so they've given kids some, a fair shot of experiencing that. So by this coming next year, 2020, everything will be on this new testing system. There won't be anything that looks like the old testing system. So some of the things that are important to realize is that this is all computer-based testing now, so there's, nothing's paper or pencil anymore, they're completely on computers, and there's a lot of, you know, selected response. They have some, what they call, technology-enhanced items, where kids can drag and drop and do some other things that they weren't able to do with the paper and pencil test. And the test itself has changed pretty markedly. So for example, in ELA, the old 10th grade ELA test for years and years was reading passages, like a single passage, some reading comprehension questions, occasionally an open response, where kids would have to write like a paragraph, and then there was one essay, it was always on like a broad topic about literature, and the kids would choose any book that fit that topic, and they knew they had to write a literary analysis, and that was the whole test. It looks nothing like that now. So we still have reading passages, but often, they're paired passages, which is a different skillset for kids to be able to infer from two different texts and to make those inferences based on all of that data. So that's a challenge for kids. There are now three full essays. There's no open response anymore, but the kids write a narrative, a literary analysis, and a persuasive piece, all in the same, like, couple of days of testing. So that's a lot of writing, much higher demands than it used to be. So the text complexity is higher, the comparisons of the text is more challenging, the writing demands are much more significant. So overall, it is a much more challenging test that reflects the greater challenge of the Common Core standards, as opposed to the previous standards in Massachusetts. And math is a very similar type of situation, it's just much more rigorous than the previous math tests were. And that's something to just keep in mind when you're looking at our data as well, and this is true for the whole state, it really is kind of a different ballgame in terms of how the kids are actually being assessed. And that's important to note when you're looking back on data. So someone might try to look at our data, for example, from 2015, and say, well, look at our data in 2015, and I'll look at our data in 2018, why has that changed? The test changed. We're actually asking kids to do something really different, and it's being normed very differently as well. So the state has actually said, please don't even try to compare these two things, they are apples and oranges, and it's not actually a fair comparison to look that far back on the data. So when we're talking about grades 3-8, it's fair to compare 2017, 2018, and 2019, it's not fair to go back any further than that, because you really can't, it's just a completely different set of expectations that the kids are being held to and that the data represents. So that's just something that you should be aware in terms of our longitudinal data as a district, that there is just a divide there in the changeover of the system.
Can I ask you a question about that? Because this is what people will say. People will say, before, we used to be whatever, above the state average, and now we're whatever. So, is comparing us to the state average still a valid comparison?
I think so. Right, because taking a look at, and that's something that we do actually like to look at, because it really helps us to understand. We want to see in a community like this that we have a fairly healthy margin from the state. If we're close to the state average, that's a problem, right? Because you're talking about districts who have many different challenges that we do, all in that same number, and so we would want to see ourselves with a healthy spread from the state average. Would the spread be exactly what it was before? Hard to say, but if we're not seeing a decent spread, then that is a question that we're asking ourselves, why are, why are we not seeing a healthier spread from the state average? And I think it's also important, it's a little bit a part of the, later part of the presentation, but we do want to track patterns in the state percentages as well, because that's also revealing. What you might see in any given year is that the, like, so you say we get our MCAS results, so for example, we have, we have the preliminary data for 2019, what we don't have are the state comparisons. So we, we don't know how to interpret that. So if you go up or down, you're like, well, do we go up or down because of something we did, or do we go up or down because the whole state went up or down? Because as much as the state tries to keep that test comparable from year to year, there are always some differences, and you will see those patterns. So you'll see the whole state went up in ELA, or the whole state went down in ELA at a particular grade level. And if we're tracking that pattern, then we see that as sort of, that's a function of the test. If we are going much higher than the state average than before, that means we've improved. If the state has gone up and we've gone down, there's a problem. So kind of taking a look at that really helps us to kind of gauge what's going on. Was it the test? Was it something that we were doing locally to help us to try to ferret out what was going on with that data, and what can we do to improve, to ensure that students are increasing in their learning and their achievement?
Peggy, can I ask you something real quick?
Sure.
Now, in the past, we've looked at, or compared to cohorts, and now we don't do that anymore. Would we, to try and say that we're one of the top schools, want to compare how we do with cohorts?
Peggy's going to get to that in a little bit in the presentation, so I just think in the name of time, you probably want to let her get through the presentation and jot your questions.
So we will get there. So, and that, so when we talk about cohort data, we're typically talking about student groups, so like a, the class of 2020, for example, how they have done all the way through, like, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, we would refer to that as a cohort. When we're talking about looking at other districts, we'd be talking about comparisons to other communities. And so, I actually... And so, I actually haven't known that in my time here that we've done comparisons, but that is something that we're giving you tonight is to see a comparison. The state provides a comparison called the DART comparison that we'll take a look at this evening. So, there are school districts that they've deemed are similar to us and therefore worthy of sort of seeing how we stack up to these other districts that have similar demographics.
Okay, yeah, that's something. I know that when I first was on the school committee, that's what we used to see that information.
Okay, and we can certainly pull that out. So, we have the DART for you this evening, so you can see that. And the tool does allow us to see how other districts are doing and to pull up other data so we can customize reports as well if there were other districts that you were particularly interested in knowing. Like, for example, I often hear people in this community say they want to compare themselves to Manchester Essex. That doesn't happen to be one of our DART districts. Doesn't mean that we couldn't pull their data and take a look at that and see how we're doing if that was something that we were interested in seeing. So, in terms of the MCAS, important to know that there's differences in the terminology between legacy and the next generation. There are still four levels of achievement. It used to be advanced and proficient and that's what you wanted all your kids to be in, was advanced and proficient. And then there was needs improvement and warning. And at the high school level, if you were in the warning category, it was actually called the failing category. You could not graduate from high school unless you could show improvement on that. And in terms of the next generation, it's still four categories. So, it's meeting and exceeding. And we want everyone to be either meeting or exceeding as opposed to partially meeting or not meeting. So, this is what a parent report looks like. Those of you with parents in the district or parents in the district probably saw something like this last year. These are the individual reports that go home and it just shows that there's a different scale now. So, the old MCAS used to be from 200 to 280 and they were in 20-point increments. So, you wanted to have a 240 or above in order to be proficient or advanced. So, now it's centered around 500 and it's a spread from 440 to 560. So, we still have four categories. There are 30-point spreads in this and you want to be above 500, basically, is what we're looking at to be meeting or exceeding. So, this was kind of interesting, the very first year that the state put this out. This is from 2017, that they were basically showing us what they anticipated that the results would look like and this was pretty much what the results looked like at the different levels. And this is pretty different. If you, if you look at kind of how this is breaking out, you have the 50th percentile mark and you're seeing half the students above and half the students below. So, if you would put this on a graph, that would be pretty much a bell curve. We're talking about, you know, half above, half below and just small amounts on both ends. So, very tiny numbers of the exceeding and tiny numbers of the not meeting. That's pretty different from how the MCAS, okay, sure. That's pretty different how the MCAS has kind of changed in the way that the data looks. So, we never used to see data looking quite that like bell curvey in terms of how it breaks out. So, this is what our eighth grade legacy performance was. This is four years' worth of data, starting in 2012 and going through. And you can see that it is very much skewed to the north here. We have very few students who are in the not meeting, the needs improvement or the warning categories in eighth grade ELA for these four years of the test. 2012 looks like it was a little bit of an anomaly, exceptionally high performance that year. The other years are all roughly equivalent to one another. It kind of switched back and forth a little bit between who was an advanced or proficient, but the percentage of students in those lower categories was roughly the same. So, our graphs look like that year in and year out. And then we move to the next generation test. We've skipped a year because of Park. We moved to the next generation and this is what it looks like. So, you're seeing kind of a difference in the way this goes. You're seeing a lot more kids in that partially meeting or not meeting expectations. And someone might look at that and say, "What's going on here? We've never had kids in those lower categories and those numbers and why, you know, what's happening to the district?" Just means that the test has been renormed. They have deliberately renormed this, so half are above and half are below. And we obviously have way more than half above. So, that actually shows that we're doing well. But if you looked at it compared to that previous, those previous years and you were thinking that these things were the same, you'd think that we had plummeted and we really didn't. It's just the renorming of the test. So, it's just something to be aware of and to know that, you know, the smack in the middle of the state is half and half and we are certainly not half and half. We have way more in those upper categories and it's just something to consider in looking at the data.
Yeah, also, I can add, I was on the norming for middle school math, seventh and eighth grade. And when we were done, we were very dissatisfied with how high it was because we felt it was so high, even though going through the process of individually analyzing the questions, we felt comfortable. So, it is very, it's more rigorous than it had been before.
Absolutely. Excuse me. So, the other thing to consider when you're looking at data, so there's the absolute achievement data in terms of how we're doing in those four categories. It's also known, something known as student growth percentiles. Excuse me. We're looking at how kids are doing on the MCAS compared to other kids who are like them in the past. So, kids are being compared, so based on their past performance. Thank you, Peter. All of a sudden, thank you so much, I appreciate it. I hate that you get, you're tickling, you just can't stop.
Yep.
Sorry about that, appreciate it. So, in any case, in the student growth percentiles, I actually find this data really interesting because we really want to know that, you know, we're a high-achieving district, that we have some advantages that other communities don't have. And so, we could be high achieving but not having high growth. And we really want to see that we're actually moving our own kids from, they're starting at a higher playing field than some other kids, but we're moving them along at a rate that is steady and hopefully sort of above the growth rate of other districts because that means we're really having a lot of value added as a district, that we're building upon their successes to really help them to achieve at greater levels. And so, the SGP to me is always a really important data point to look at because that's telling us how we're doing as a district in terms of building upon the, sort of the things that kids come to us with already and making sure that they're even more successful. So, when we're looking at the SGP, we're looking at, individual kids' SGPs are calculated by looking at how kids across the state who have performed similarly to these kids in the past on the MCAS, are they growing at the same rate as those kids? Are they growing at a faster rate? Are they growing at a slower rate? And then they take that number and assign a number to a student. And then the school or district GPA is the combination or the composite of all of those SGPs together and we get a single number that tells us what our overall SGP is for a grade level in a subject area. So, 40 to 60 is considered typical growth. So, 50 to 60 is like the high typical and the 40 to 50 is 40, 49 is like a low typical. We'd ideally want to see ourselves at least in the 50 range. 40 is still acceptable. It's in the typical range, but it's not where we want to be. We want to be sort of above the curve. If you're over 60, that's really good. That means you have high growth, you're outpacing kids in that category. If you're below 40, that's a problem. That's telling us that there's something that we're not helping these kids to grow in and we need to be looking at what we're doing because we shouldn't be seeing something under 40. So, that's just an important number to pay attention to when you look at the reports. The state comparisons, we talked about this a little bit already, but I always find it helpful to look at the state comparisons. It helps me to make sense of the data. And I'm always interested, to your point, Michelle, earlier, is that a small differential from the state or is it a large differential? There should be a differential for sure. We should definitely be above the state, but we want to see that we are well above the state. And if we're finding ourselves kind of close to the state, then that's something that we really want to be taking a look at. We also want to know what are the patterns over time? Are we kind of holding steady, like we're staying this far above the state because other districts are growing, but we're also growing? Are we seeing that shrink? Now, if, if we're at the top of the scale, like, some of our high school scores in the past have been, you know, 97, 98% of our kids are advanced and proficient. Well, you really can't get much higher than that. So, as the rest of the state is improving, the gap is going to close. And that's not a sign that we're doing something wrong if our achievement is still that high. But if we have achievement that's lower and the state's closing the gap, then there's something about what we're doing that we need to be looking at because we want to see that we, we could probably be moving faster than we are. And then thinking about that relative, relative difficulty of the test. So, I'll be very curious when this data comes out on Tuesday because I have yet to see myself how this compares and what that means in terms of how we interpret these 2019 results. So, we're going to take a look at some data tonight and bring you through this process a little bit. So, keeping in mind that some of the things that we tell teachers about using data. So, data is never intended to assign blame or to judge or anything along those lines. Looking at data is really to understand what's happening so that we can make the best decisions for kids. And one of the things that the TERC process often says is really be willing to hang out in uncertainty. We look at data, we want to jump to conclusions, we want to find the answer, but often you can't come to a conclusion off of a set of data. You really just have to use that to ask some more questions. And it might point you in a direction, but then you have to do further investigation in order to know if your tentative conclusion is actually valid or not. So, we want to definitely be always asking questions about, you know, what are all of the possible explanations? We might have a pet theory about why it is the way it is, but we want to make sure we've explored all of the reasons because we want to make sure we've isolated the right problem. So, you don't want to rush to, "Well, we're going to make, try this thing to improve our scores" unless you really can be sure that that's the real problem. Otherwise, you're not going to see the improvement that you're looking for. So, you really want to ask, "What more do we need to explore? What additional data might we need?" Because you really don't want to be making decisions off one data source. So, the MCAS is a valuable source of data, but you would never want to just have the MCAS be making, you know, decisions within the district. You would be wanting to look at local benchmark data, classroom data, finding other ways to triangulate that data. The recommendation is that you have at least three different sources of data if you're going to make any significant decisions about what you're doing around student achievement. And you want to look at trends over time. So, a single year's data can be a function of the test. It can be a function of the cohort because sometimes we have a group of kids who are super strong and sometimes we have a group of kids who need additional help and that's reflected all the way through. And you can see it right from third grade, right through 10th grade, that they tend to either be above or below the norm. And so, you don't necessarily want to say, "Oh, there's something wrong with our math program" based on cohort data or there's something really right. Like, sometimes you can look at a year's data and go, "Wow, this is awesome. We did great this year." And that means that that was something we did, but that cohort's been doing that well all the way along. And so, probably we didn't change a whole lot to be producing those results. So, it's important to understand that. And it's also really important to know that MCAS is one moment in time. It's a couple of days out of their year that they're sitting for that test. You don't know if they've had a bad day. You know, I mean, in terms of thinking about what that means for a student. Looking at patterns for us as a district is really important, but for an individual child, not so much, right? So, a parent getting those results, you have to look at everything. You have to look at how your child's been doing in class, how are they been doing on other types of assessments. You wouldn't want to just have the MCAS be making you feel like the total judgment about how your child is doing in the same way that we wouldn't want the MCAS to be the total judgment about how we're doing as a school or a district as well. So, just something to keep in mind. So, what you have in front of you, your first page is known as the Data-Driven Dialogue. This is the discussion tool for the data process. And we are going to truncate this tonight because to go through the data-driven dialogue typically takes at least 45 minutes and we don't have 45 minutes just for one set of data. So, we're going to do a really shortened version of this. And normally, we would have you predict, but you already have the data. Normally, I would have you predict before you got the data. So, there's no point in having you predict on data that you can already see. So, we're going to skip that stage. And we're also going to skip the Go Visual. So, normally, when you're looking at data, you would make a bar graph or line graph or something that would help you to better understand that data and make sure you are really paying attention to it and not just sort of like paying attention to a little bit of it. We don't, again, do not have a lot of time to do that tonight. So, we're going to be focusing mainly in on observations and inferences. So, thinking about what that means, and these are examples that are just to show you the difference between an observation and an inference. This is not Hamilton one-of-mdata, okay? I just want to be clear about that. But if this were Hamilton one-of-mdata, here might be some of the explanations. So, if we saw, for example, that 75% of our fourth graders had scored below proficiency in mathematics, they were all like not meeting or partially meeting expectations, then we might say, "There is something really wrong with our math resources," right? Because perhaps they're not aligned to standards. But there's a difference between saying a fact, which is 75% of them are below proficient, and making an inference, which is the reason is, or what we think the reason is, is our curriculum. Because it could be any number of things that would explain that. And so, that's a judgment call. It's a tentative explanation, one that you would want to explore with more data. But, but the fact is the fact. An observation is, "This is really what the data says" and we want to pay attention to that first. Another example would be 22% of our students answered item B, the correct answer is A. That's a fact. Our interpretation of that, "Well, they didn't understand the vocabulary." Maybe not. Maybe it was a red herring question, maybe it underlined a misconception. There could be other explanations, but what isn't going to change is the fact that that was the answer. So, when you're making observations, you're paying attention to what is actually here and ideally, you're looking at patterns. So, this is, we are, you know, this many points above the state on average or we are, you know, this is better than this other area or we improved this amount from this year to this year. Really factual observations before we move to inferences. So, you spend about, usually about five or 10 minutes making just observations and then you'd spend another 10 minutes or so making inferences. We're going to shorten that a little bit this evening. So, we'll probably spend about, you know, five to seven minutes on observations and five to seven minutes on inferences and then we'll go on to our next data set. Any questions about that? Okay, so, the very first thing that you see in your packet is the achievement data from 2017 and 2018. And this is all the levels for all the subject areas. So, you can see, just to orient you to what you're looking at here, if you look at the 2017 one that looks like this. So, this is a canned state report that's on the website. They only give the graph for third grade, so pretty much ignore that because it's not useful with the rest of the chart, but I can't take it out because it's a canned report. But you really want to look at the chart here. So, this is showing you grades three through eight, how the kids are doing overall. So, the combined meeting and exceeding expectations is the first two columns with the district and then the state percentage. If you go all the way over to the right, you can see what the average student growth percentile is. So, that kind of gives that, that other data point that we were talking about. And if you scan down to the bottom, these are the, the legacy tests. So, we can see what's happening with science and also ELA, math and science at the high school, but that's a different scale, which is why they've broken it out on the bottom because those are still the legacy tests. So, we're going to spend about five or 10 minutes. If you want to sit with a partner next to you and just kind of go through and what are you observing? And then we'll record some of these up here and then we will try to make some inferences. What are some tentative conclusions that we would make based on what we're taking a look at? So, if you want to, like, maybe Julie and Michelle, if you want to hang out together and just take a look at that data together, what's jumping off the page at you? So, when you consider the questions on the data-driven dialogue, so what important points are popping out? What are some patterns or trends that are emerging? What seems surprising or unexpected or what are some things that we have not explored? So, those are the types of things and you want to keep your observations factual. Again, based in data, no inference involved.
Seventeen, eighteen.
Meeting or exceeding, exceeding, meeting. So, this is a combined, these two numbers are combined?
So...
Seventeen and forty-seven is sixty-four, okay.
Right here.
That's these two columns combined.
Yeah.
Yeah, sixty-four is seventeen.
Exceeding.
Yeah, seventeen plus forty-seven, okay, so those two combined to one.
So, then you go to the next grade.
So, this is the number she said we're concerned with, right?
For us and a trend going up for the state.
Exceeding.
So, that's, however, then you look here in exceeding, right? A lot of kids in exceeding, but then the next year, we only had nine percent in exceeding. So, we were more in proficient but less in exceeding, which means there was a lot more in proficient. The thing I noticed right away is this is the median and this is the average. And those could be really big numbers.
This is in one year.
So, the median, the percentile, the average.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you have to be positive.
All right, so, do we want to look at one grade? Okay, so...
We just run policy for two hours.
Okay, so, let's pick eighth grade. Okay, so, eighth grade, ELA and...
I suggested two of you in policy.
Sixty-seven in ELA, so that went up. However, the state also went up, but we seem to have gone up by sixty-seven percent to seventy-two percent. Was the state going up or not?
That's bad.
Right, right.
According to this.
And then for ELA, the state average stayed the same, but slightly.
Yeah, this one right here, right? Math is only ten points or eleven points above.
Exceeding also went up.
Nine points above.
Percentage wise. And the state went up by two.
It's the difference, same thing.
Yep, and. For math. It stayed the same, but the state actually went down. So, that's kind of a good thing as well.
State is pretty steady.
And actually, that one point that we went up in exceeding may account for the one point that we went up in. So that's good. Okay, so then, um.
What is this number?
What about this? Look at this.
So.
Oh, yeah, so it's four and four.
Grade four.
Four and four.
Look at that.
And then the state, their percent went up, so that was good that our percent didn't go up. So that's good. Um.
Yes, a bunch of people are in meeting, but. Exceeding. Exceeding, oh, another one.
Eight plus five, thirteen percentage points, I guess is what I'm thinking. Although I'm surprised. That's not that many kids. Yes, it is, look, it's grades three.
Three.
So that's a summary, so that's a good thing to notice, that the bottom one is a summary. Okay, we didn't even notice that. So that's even better, because that means on average, it's a sample. Um, and then let's look at that growth. So it's hard to compare, because this is a mean and this is an average. I mean, you can't even compare those really. You could compare the average scaled score, but. The average scaled score went up, which is.
Three through eight, English and mathematics. That's, uh, still scaled, sorry.
Scaling is sort of a norm. So norming, if I don't.
Seeing on most. Right. Yeah.
Just on the state, yeah, that's.
Yeah, because. Not useful.
Just good thing. All right, so then let's look at this, because this one sometimes falls off.
I bet you I can look at that. What's that?
Some people are more data.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because we got a new, or a new science report. But, um, maybe look at fifth grade?
So what, what's the difference section down here?
So this is, this is ELA, and then this is ELA math, and this is science. And it's smaller, because science is only given in fifth, eighth, and tenth, whereas this is given three through eight. So. Hmm, do we see that same pattern? We're not as far, for fifth grade, we're not as, we don't have that. As much divergence.
But, again, ours went up eleven.
Go the next year, ours went up a lot.
And ours only went up one.
Advanced went up a little bit. Well, a lot more kids became proficient. For whatever reason, whether it's.
About another minute to finish up your observations, and then we'll share some of those out.
The nice thing here is there's a lot less in the morning. And I wonder what.
In the eighth grade, science and English went down.
Engineering, that's engineering. Uh, yes, it went down, but look, the state went down by five points, and we went down by two points. So. And even though we went down in proficient or higher, our advanced went up. So that's. Five, five points, so. Um, which, which makes sense why the proficient would go down. And except for that one place, what was that one place?
So. All right, I'm going to pull you in. If we were doing this for making decisions, we would obviously give you a lot more thinking time than we're giving right now, but we're just trying to have the experience and really be thinking about how this process works. So I'm going to ask each pair to share out maybe a couple of the observations that you think are most interesting or most significant, something that really jumped out at you that you think has, is worthy of sort of further exploration. So, Michelle's group, do you want to start off a couple of observations?
So we were noticing the percentage of students who were meeting or exceeding expectations from seventeen to eighteen. And we went through first and sort of said, okay, who, what grade level, so not looking at cohort, but just grade level, increased from seventeen to eighteen, and who stayed the same or who went down. And then we compared that to the state to see, like, what are the nuances between how our students performed and how the state? So one example we really honed in on was grade four mathematics, and we noticed that both the districts' percentage of students decreased significantly. Well, the districts', I should say, the districts' percentage of students decreased significantly, if you were looking at fourth grade math to fourth grade math, from seventy to fifty-nine. But then we went back and looked at grade three, because those would have been the fourth grade students in two thousand and eighteen. And we noticed that in grade three mathematics in two thousand and seventeen, sixty-eight percent of the students were meeting or exceeding. And those, you know, hypothetically same students in grade four mathematics, although we know some students come and go, only fifty-nine percent were meeting or exceeding expectations. So that, that looked like a significant decrease, and it made us wonder, how would that, how would they perform as fifth graders in math? So kind of thinking forward. But then we started looking across to see, well, what caused the meeting and exceeding of that cohort, assuming that they're the same kids, but we know they're not, to decrease? And we noticed that it was really more students were partially meeting and/or meeting expectations than previously. So that seemed to be like where the shift happened. It wasn't like we had a significant increase in students not meeting, because that really was just like one percentage point difference. We had nine percent more students partially meeting.
And if you went and looked at the data, you could find out if those were like borderline, borderlines, yeah.
Right, if you looked at individual students, were they kids who were like on the cusp?
But it's a whole age group, you know, are they following?
Well, just to be interested to see what happens. I don't know if Julie said in fifth grade, that would be a tracking.
So, do you guys want to share a couple of?
Well, the first thing is, this one has the median student growth per cent, and this one has the average, which are different statistics. So those aren't comparing apples to apples, so we just didn't. Then we thought we were smart, right? And we were going to compare the eighth grade here in this bottom column. And then later on, we figured out it's the whole group, because we saw that it was eight hundred students that were tested. But, go ahead.
We noticed that, at least compared to the state level, the, the district level increases higher in the proficiency than the state average does. So we're increasing our exceeds expectations at a greater level than the state is, at least, when looking at the numbers.
So they go up, but we go up by more.
At a greater percentage.
In both, ELA and math.
It's kind of it.
It was kind of it.
The last point, oh, I'm sorry. No, the last point they made is the point we picked up on as well. Yeah. No, no, for the sake of time, we can.
Right, so once we made our observations, and we're really delving into the background, we do start to ask questions. And so you guys were going there already, some of the questions, and how was the difference, right? So that's one of the questions that we're asking, it will really end in the group that seemed to be decreasing. Do they bounce back up? Do they continue to decrease? What's happening with that? So what is happening? The fifth grade math cohort, again, twenty-nine, is one of the questions that you have. And then I think we were thinking about those kids that dropped from meeting to partially meeting, are they quite on the cusp? Like, did we actually delve down further, delve down further into that data? Meeting to partially. Or are we seeing a little decrease drop? Because that, it could be a difference of a single question, potentially, that puts them from one to another. That wouldn't be as much of a concern, as if we saw a greater gap in terms of their skill sets. Something you should be aware of, that we can do, this is how we look at this data as a district, is that we're looking here at kid data, or we're sort of aggregate data for the district in terms of student performance. But we can actually look at what's called strand data, so we can see how we're doing on.
We can see how we're doing on specific standards. And then we can also look at item analysis. So for grades ten, we can see every question that was on the MCAS, and exactly how our kids did on that question. They don't release the whole test in grades three through eight, so we can see how they did on every item, but you can't always see the question, which is not as helpful in terms of analyzing it. But they don't want to release the whole test, I think, because they reuse some of those questions from time to time. So, so they don't give us the whole test to analyze. But that is really a helpful process, and that's something that we do every year. We take a look at that data, because that really starts to tell us about what's going on with our curriculum, or what might be going on with our instruction. So some of the analysis that we've been doing over the last couple of years, because you were looking at some of these concerns about math, for example, we too were concerned about the math scores. That's why we adopted new math resources. So we have brand-new math resources in grades K through eight. So part of what we were looking in this last, last year was the first year of implementation for these resources that have great ratings and ed reports, and are highly aligned to the standards. And the two thousand and nineteen data would tell us, how did that first year implementation go? And we would be taking a look again at that strand and item analysis, what kind of a difference are we seeing with aligned resources? Now, you're not going to necessarily expect to see things be off the charts in the first year, because there's usually an implementation dip as teachers get used to new curriculum. That curriculum presupposes certain prerequisite knowledge that, that they may not have, because they were using a different program. So that's, it tends to, the transition tends to be a little bit bumpy, but that'll be a really interesting point, and that's something that we inferred from the data as well. So there's a lot more sort of granular look at the MCAS data than we're doing here, but just to know that that data is available to us and is used by the district to be analyzing more closely what really is going on that explains these numbers. And what can we do about that from a standpoint of curriculum resources or instructional methods to improve students' achievement? All right, so I'm going to bring you through the next phase of this, and you may want to be taking a look at this next sheet on the accountability data while I'm explaining this, because it gives you some context. So it's the one that looks like this, multicolored. So if you're looking at this grid here, there's a lot of information to understand about what's happening here. And this is the new accountability system that came out last year, so this is the very first time last year that we actually saw what this was going to look like. And they take a whole bunch of different pieces of information into consideration. So if you look at, there's kind of a dividing line down the middle. If you look at the left-hand side of this, this refers to grades three through eight. If you look at the right-hand side, it refers specifically to the high school. And they've separated those two out, because they hold the high school accountable for additional criteria beyond just what they hold elementary and, and the middle school accountable for. So the middle school and the elementary are judged based on their MCAS scores, so those, that overall achievement data. They're also based on the growth data, the student growth percentiles. And the other variable that Massachusetts put into place last year is chronic absenteeism. So students are absent for ten percent or more of the school year, that's also a variable in our accountability data. And that translates into eighteen or more days a year that students would be out, which sounds like a whole lot, and it is, but that's two days a month. Right? So sometimes families don't realize, we took a vacation this month, we scheduled a doctor's appointment that month, the kid got the flu. You know, and before we know it, we have students whose attendance is really adding up across the course of the year, and that does factor into our accountability data as well, and you can see that here. Over on the high school side, you see that they're also held accountable for our graduation rate, whether that happened in four years or five or more years for students, what our dropout rate is. And then there's an advanced coursework completion. So they want to see the percentage of students who are taking AP, the, you know, advanced math courses, dual enrollment courses with college, those are all things that they take a look at from our SIMS data. So in our state report, we basically share everything that's in Aspen with the state, and they are able to see exactly what our students are taking. And that goes, that feeds into this part of this analysis on the high school. And then the, on the bottom half of this, so this, this first chart is the overall, and this is referring to the district. So each school also has its own accountability chart, and it is also publicly available, but we're just looking at the district level here. And then the report on the bottom, there's a, a pulldown menu that happens to be at high needs there. And high needs is a combination of students who are economically disadvantaged, have disabilities, or English language learners combined into one. And so that's giving you a sense of how our high-need students are performing as compared to the larger district. The other thing that's different about this new accountability report is they have something called the lowest-performing students. So what they end up doing, and I'll get to that slide. Basically, what they've done is that they've isolated the students who are considered lowest-performing, and it's based on, basically, a combination of their ELA and math average scale scores. And they figured out who didn't do as well in your district before, and they have to be students who have been in your school at least a couple of years, and who have been tested a couple of different times, and are not first- or second-year English language learners. And the reason why the state puts those requirements on is they want to be able to say that their performance actually had something to do with us, right? So if a student had only been here for six months, probably their achievement has more to do with where they came from than what we're doing in this district. So that's why those students would be excluded if they fit that category, just to make sure that they're really holding us accountable for our student achievement. But that's now a variable, and that is called out separately, and different points are attached to those students, because the state really wants to know, are you paying attention to the students with the highest needs in your district? And are you moving them along in the same way that you're moving the other students in your district along? And if you're not, what are you going to do about that? So it's become a separate part of this accountability, and really putting our attention, not that we haven't already been paying, paying attention to those students, but it's calling them out and really paying attention to them as a group, to make sure that we're meeting their needs. So you'll see that everything here is on a scale of zero to four. So this is us being compared to our own past performance. So did we see that we had, and every year, the state sets targets for us about sort of where, where we were last year, where would they be expecting us to be this year, because they sort of set, like, we want you to grow by this much, and they set a specific target for our growth. And they're giving us a score here based on how we stack up to that target that they've set for us in that particular year. And it's always going to be expecting us to do better than the previous year. So they're always like raising that bar just a little bit more. So if we are meeting the target, we've met what the state has said, then we get a three. If we've exceeded their target, we get a four. If we've improved, but not improved enough to meet their target, we get a two. If there's been no change in our performance, we get a one. And if we've declined even by a tiny amount, we get zero points. So it will be really interesting to see how this scale plays out in the future, because that's a really sensitive scale, when you think about that. Like, if you decline just the tiniest bit, you pick up no points. And that's being averaged in with these other variables, so you could see yourself, you know, very quickly losing a lot of points and losing your percentages towards your targets and your overall accountability rating. So it'll be interesting over time to see how this plays out. Are we seeing wide variance in these scores from year to year? Or are we seeing stability? It's kind of hard to tell yet how this will actually play out in, in reality. Stacy, you look like you had a question.
I'm just kind of curious about the chronic absenteeism. Do we, are we having issues? I mean, I've heard it in the past, and is there anything we can do about that if it's affecting?
Right. I would say we have an issue, yeah. I mean, we're, it's showing up in our accountability rating, if you look, if you look at how we're doing. So if you, if you scroll down to chronic absenteeism at the elementary level, we are seeing that we have, you know, we're just meeting the expectations there, but our lowest-performing students have actually declined in their attendance, because that's what that zero means. If you look at the high school, all students have declined in their attendance, right?
Well, that's what I was looking at this, and.
Right. It's an issue.
Because I saw Ipswich, or just found out Ipswich put in a new policy for abs- absenteeism now, actually.
So we don't necessarily have a new policy, because we're following school committee policy, but we did sort of step up our outreach to parents, shall we say. So we, we came up with new letters that are being sent out. We have them built into Aspen now, so they'll be generated automatically. So there's a certain trigger, like, a certain number of days you're out for any reason will trigger a letter. If there's a, if you have like a string of unexcused, it's going to trigger a different letter. And making sure that we're having meetings with parents and really figuring out what's going on with their attendance, and that we're really aware of what's happening. The principals are all talking at curriculum nights about the importance of, you know, being in school and trying to schedule those doctor's appointments for after three o'clock, and trying not to take early vacations, and things that are cutting into school attendance, because there is, there are way too many kids. So we end up running reports. We were really curious about that, and I think across the state, people were shocked by it, because, you know, you don't necessarily pay attention to that number. When you think about eighteen days, it's a lot of days to be missing school, and what that means is almost a month's worth of instruction. So think about what that means. We haven't been able to teach these kids, and as Ben said to his parents, Ben Cherston, he was like, I can't teach them if they're not here, right? And so really, the importance of that and how we work with our students, I think it's something that we, we really need to be discussing more as a community, because that can have a huge variable in individual and district's achievement, that, those attendance rates.
I think the other part that was shocking to me when I started researching this and studying it deeply is the effect that absenteeism has not only on your child who's absent and the instructional time that they're missing, but the impact that has on the classroom community, and that, and the social and emotional development of your child and other students within that classroom community. And if you start to think about it, whether it's because of vacations, or, you know, trauma in the home, or there's a whole variety of reasons that leads to absenteeism, but really educating folks about that, because that was a shock for me. I, I, you know, I think a lot of people could say, well, my kid's fine, or my kid does well, and so it's okay if they miss a couple of days, or if we schedule that doctor appointment during the day. But thinking about the way it impacts their classmates was a. But thinking about the way it impacts their classmates was a lens that was new to me.
Is this something new, like within the last couple of years? Or have we not seen that in the past? Or I just was curious, has it, something recently caused a rise?
I would have to look back at the data to, I'm not sure. I think that's something we'd have to dig back on.
I think it's more, it's the Every Student Succeeds Act that allowed chronic absenteeism to be one of your measures of accountability that has gotten a lot of people across the country looking at attendance data in a way that maybe you didn't typically before.
Right. I don't know that the problem is different, our attention to the problem is different.
Yep.
Our awareness of the problem. So what we ended up doing internally at leadership team is actually running a report for any student that was absent 10 days or more. Because we're like, well, that's, you know, 5% of the school year, and that's significant, and that's a lot of, that's a couple of weeks of class and what's going on there. And that's really how we ended up revising our attendance letters, that we were triggering certain, five unexcused absences is triggering a letter, 10 absences for any reason is triggering a letter. We're really, and we're triggering them automatically. So we're not like, you know, they're not getting missed. We're generating these letters and sending them home because even as some members of the leadership team were saying, like, as a parent, you're not necessarily thinking about how much it's adding up, right? Like they miss for this, and they miss for that, but then what is that cumulative effect for your child? And are there places, like, you know, if they had the flu, there's nothing you can do about that. But there are other things where you might be able to make a different choice and improve your child's attendance. So something to be aware of. And certainly something we need to pay attention to as a district.
Yeah, I heard about it the first time, I think, was last year when there was talk about it.
Right.
That there was an issue. I was like shocked.
Yeah. I think a lot of administrators across the state were shocked when it was really called out like that. We were all given pause at just how many, you know, how big an issue this is across the state. Hamilton Wondham is not alone in this, but this new measure has really put a spotlight on this issue.
This is just a casual observation, but from my time teaching here. There were many parents, many parents who took their students to go to vacation early. They came back late. That happened a lot.
Right. Maybe people want to take advantage of the cheaper airfares and everything else or the fewer crowds, and we understand that, but there is an impact to it. And people aren't always thinking about what that impact is.
I don't think parents are educated to understand it either, like to realize that. They think, oh, I'm saving money, or this is going on. And, but as school committee, you know, and a parent, it's like, oh, might change what I might be doing.
Right.
Not that my child has chronic absenteeism, but...
Right, yeah. Yeah, I think it is something that can make us all more aware of the choices that we're making as parents with our children, right? And thinking about that. So, I mean, it is the...
And you know that, I mean, there's some things that can't be avoided, but sometimes chronic absenteeism can be a sign of other things. And it's a way that we can come around, either the family or the student, and help them, if it's not over-vacationing, to deal with it. And it's an indicator, but it's not, you know, parents should not be made to feel guilty that they took a day or two off early to save $500 or $600 bucks on a vacation. Because they might have to. But they just shouldn't do that for every vacation.
We're really looking at cumulative absences, right? I mean, most kids do miss a couple of days a year, like for whatever reason, right? Like, but it's the impact of large numbers of absences and what that does to your child's education, that's what we're concerned about and making parents aware of that. And again, those things that are within their control. You know, some kids have chronic illness, and that is not within a parent's control, and they need to miss that much, and that's sort of the way it is. So, okay. So if we look at this data, this is just to kind of give you a sense of it. And I already kind of went through these various categories. This is the weighting. So we have some English language learners in our district, but it's such a small number that we don't actually have a cohort under the state's definition. And so they don't actually calculate this as part of our accountability rating because we have such low incidence of students who are English language learners in the district. So the percentages that are over to the right, those are the weighting of the, in terms of how this factors overall into our accountability rating. So our achievement data, meaning our straight-up our MCAS scores, is 67.5%. The student growth is 22.5, and the attendance is 10%. At the high school, that weighting is a little bit different, so it's lower on the overall MCAS achievement, the same on student growth, but all of the other high school completion takes up 20%, and then we have 10% again for this. So we're seeing that we're getting these points on a zero-to-four-point scale for all of these different variables, and then they're averaging them together and figuring out what percentage it is that we're actually meeting. And the target, kind of like under the old system, you were supposed to be 75% or better, that's still true, right? That you want to have, you want to be meeting 75% of your targets. And that's to be considered like you're meeting all of them as opposed to partially meeting. And that's shown on this graph here. So most schools, they're estimating, the state is estimating that 85% of schools will either be meeting or partially meeting their targets. 15% of schools would require some intervention because of their percentile is really low or they have other sort of hot-button areas where they need attention. And then there are some schools that are recognized for their improvement or their overall achievement. So last year as a district, we were partially meeting expectations at 67%. So we were close to the 75%, but we weren't over that mark. And you can kind of take a look at this and see, well, where was that? Where were we not getting three or four points, basically, and calculating on that? So that's what we're going to take a look at. Oh, and one last thing. So this is not part of the district rating, but each school has an accountability percentile. So what the state does is it takes all these variables and then like lines all the schools up, basically all of the elementary schools against each other and says, you know, you're at the 99th percentile, that means that you're doing better than 99% of the schools in the state, or 85%, you're doing better than 85%. And so every school is assigned that percentile on an annual basis as well. So you could drill down to the school level and see how the school is stacking up compared to all other schools in the state at that same level. So taking a look at the district accountability data, so we know that we weren't where we wanted to be. We're not at 75% or more, which is what we would be hoping to see. So what are we noticing about where we're not meeting? So this is where we'd be making the observations and trying to kind of figure this out. So again, we'll go back to maybe five minutes or so of talking to your colleagues. Less data to look at here. But what are you seeing? What's jumping out at you as something that seems worthy of consideration or exploring further within this data?
It's this. We're looking at this, Peggy, right?
You're looking at, yes, the blue one that looks like this. When it looks like that. Just looking at the first page. You can look at the high needs too if you want, but the first page.
So this is where we're having issues. Chronic absenteeism and advanced coursework completion.
This one here. This one here, so no points. This is just high school, right?
And something, because you have low growth or low scores.
We have to rephrase your language.
And a mathematic growth.
So this one, mathematics, lowest performing, oh, non-high school grades.
That's why I brought it up. Saw that. It jumped out at me. This, chronic absenteeism.
This is the lowest performing?
So the lowest-performing students are zero.
In the high school too, right?
So funny, I could analyze that stuff, this stuff. This is from the analyst.
So she's going to reverse the order. So both, so all the way through K through, K through 12, according to this, chronic absenteeism is a problem, right? Because it's a possible point to four, and we got zero out of four.
Yep.
What about this one? All students, non, what is this? What's the difference? All students, non-high school grades, lowest-performing students. So the lowest-performing students got zero. All, across all the students, we got three out of four points. So we lost a point there. So that's, that would bring us to 74, right? Is that how we're reading this? All of these add up to that? No, that's a percentile. No, that's not points. Where is our points? Additional indicators? I don't know if I'm reading this right.
But look at this.
Sixty-two, so once you're non-high school. Weight of non-high school results, seventy.
So we need more help there than we do here. Wait. That's what burns down, is the non-high school results.
Worse than high school.
So it could be doctor's appointments, like she was saying, right? Kids going to doctor's appointments.
Or absenteeism.
I notice a lot of parents put that, you know, for dentists and orthodontists, a lot of parents put their kids out.
Lowest performing students, a lot of high school grades.
I did remember a lot of parents put their kids out for dentist appointments, orthodontist appointments.
If it's helpful, these are what the ratings mean again on the board.
Advanced course completion.
So, oh, so this means no change, then declined. These are declined. Three means met target, exceeded target.
Oh, okay.
So here we declined.
So then it's really, so not look at that, but look at this.
Yeah, because, well, this one here, one, no change.
But that's something to notice because then we can ask a question.
But it's still no change.
So it's still going to be good. Two, two.
This was easier to analyze.
And I'll take this time.
I'm going to finish up your observations, and then we'll share out.
Okay.
But could, but could, but could.
Stacy, what's that program called that?
I can't remember. My Alzheimer's is kicking in. I can't remember what it's called.
I thought this was the same thing, trended at the high school. The state's determined that's the total.
This was easier for me to analyze, it really was.
All right. Why don't we share out? Peter, would you mind if we started on your side of the room this time? Just an observation that you made?
I knew that was going to happen. For me, for us, it was easier to analyze, or at least me. I think the thing that stood out to me was the chronic absenteeism. Just on, you know, the lowest performing students and the non-high school grades as well as then also high school grades.
So lowest performing students and all high school students declined in absenteeism, right?
Yes.
Well, they increased in absenteeism.
They increased in absenteeism but declined in performance, which...
But they, they had worse, basically, their attendance fell.
Yes. And then I do have a question, but it stood out to me was advanced coursework completion. Is that like an AP class?
Yeah, so a number of things fall into that. The state actually finally released the list of things that was considering because the first year it was a mystery. We're like, okay, we know AP, but what else? But now they've actually specifically listed like precalculus and other things that would be advanced math classes that wouldn't necessarily be AP, but we would consider rigorous and sort of beyond the scope of what you might normally expect in a high school, like Algebra II is a high school expectation. Beyond that is more getting into the college realm. So it's courses that are more like college, dual enrollment courses. So if kids were enrolled here and at North Shore, for example, that would also be considered advanced coursework. So there are numbered, there's a whole list of courses to put back.
And that's one thing I had questioned for the last several years, and I was kind of, you know, that kind of heard from different sources that, no, we don't need to worry about AP. But when I went to look at colleges outside of the state, I saw what kids were taking for AP and advanced coursework and what colleges were asking for. Parents were saying, oh, yeah, my child did this and this. I just went, oh, my goodness. Where, we don't really stand that. And it, they were bigger colleges, but they were asking for quite a bit of that advanced coursework.
Right. I mean, it depends on the college and the admissions. I think that colleges are perhaps putting less weight on it than they used to. They certainly don't accept it for the credit in the way that they used to. Like if you got a qualifying score, you would actually count towards credit in college, and many of them are no longer doing that, actually. So in terms of whether or not, you know, they're counting it as part of their admissions process, but they are certainly de-weighting AP when it comes to actually counting it towards what it was originally intended to do was advanced coursework in college. I mean, I think that what colleges are looking at, and Kristin Lazzaro could speak to this much more eloquently than I can, but what they're really looking for is that kids have challenged themselves, right? And so when you consider the array of courses that are available at the high school, did they make the best use of the opportunities available to them and challenge themselves to the best of their academic ability? And that is part of what you would be looking at. So a student who has straight A's but is taking courses that are not as rigorous as others would not have as much standing in a college admissions process as a student who maybe got Bs but really challenged themselves with rigorous courses. So it's all part of, you know, the methodology that the colleges use. I mean, I would never say that they don't look at these things, but the degree to which they're as valuable as they once was. When we do offer a lot of AP courses, a lot of our students do take AP. I think one of the most recent statistics, maybe 73% of our students have taken at least one AP class, so that's a pretty high percentage for a high school to have that many students enrolled in it. So it's not like we're not doing AP, we are. I think we don't necessarily think that AP is the be-all, end-all in terms of rigorous coursework because AP tends to emphasize a lot of breadth of knowledge but not as much depth of knowledge. There's a lot of cramming of content into AP courses where other courses could go into much more depth, have project-based learning, have other types of experiences that are equally valuable, but there isn't as much time for that in an AP. So there's a lot of controversy around AP and whether that's the best thing.
Sometimes it's, I know the way they schedule our AP. We have a very tight schedule at our high school, and it's very hard to take multiple APs because of our scheduling. Kids have, I've had parents complain to me that their kids had to make a choice of which AP they're going to take because they were scheduled at the same time. And I believe that, I mean, we only have 12 APs or 13 APs offered. And so I'm just, I know, talking, I'm from the West Coast, talking to families there, they are, they put a lot more emphasis on APs, like on the West Coast. And so the kids come out of school with, you know, 4.5s, 4.3s, and we can't really compete with that.
So can we put an inference question there as to why do we have a zero?
That's what I was going to ask, that same question.
That would be like, information we need to know, why is it zero? If we know we offer these courses, why is it zero?
Well, it all, but keep in mind that that zero means that it declined from the previous year.
It declined.
Right? It could have declined by 1% in terms of the number of kids who are enrolled in that, and that would pick up zero points. So when you're talking about the number of kids in our district, like small change, because we're so small, small changes in the number of kids taking it equals bigger percentages, right? Like we'll see that at the elementary level, that if you have like 30 to 40 students in a grade level at a school, right? That a change in one child can represent a two to three percentage difference point, a point difference in what you're seeing on the MCAS scores. And that's huge as opposed to in a big district, you wouldn't see that much variability. So that is always something to keep in mind, is our size actually means that any change has a much bigger reverberation in our scores than in a larger district, but that would be absorbed in the averages of all of the students involved in that number. So I don't, without seeing exactly what that number is underneath it, I don't know if that's cause for concern or not. Did we drop by 10%? Maybe I'd be concerned. 1%?
Well, I think we might drop. It depends on how weighted it is because we didn't offer AP history this year, so that's at least, you know, a drop of 12 kids.
Right.
14, 10 to 14 kids.
Right.
This is course completion, so I think it's of the students enrolled in the course, right?
Well, I think it's a number, I think it's a percentage of students who take the Well, I think it's number, I think it's a percentage of students who take the course, so, um, I don't think it's just course completion, I think it's ki- kids who have enrolled in, in, um, in a, in a, so having access to it probably does affect it.
Yes, so participation.
I think that that's complex, and that's certainly something we could explore at a further meeting, but the experts on exactly that data, that Brian Menegony would be able to speak to that much better than I could in terms of the specifics of the schedule and what's happening.
Yeah.
Um, the reality is that AP US history wasn't, um, run because it was low enrollment, and there were other classes that kids were more interested in, and we, you know, when you have limited staff, you have to allocate your resources to where the kids wanna go. Um, and so sometimes courses don't run if we don't have as many students interested in them.
And I think it's hard, because right now, I know from my kids being in the high school, that they've got, my son, for instance, has had a class that he didn't even enroll for, and he wanted some other class that would have been a higher level class, and he couldn't get it. They gave him his seventh choice on something else, so.
So I think that is going off track from here, but should be, I've written down here as something that we should put on a future agenda.
Right. Yeah, I think it's worthy of exploration of why that happens. I do think that we need to keep in mind the size of the high school and how challenging that is to schedule with a broad array of courses. So I was a high school administrator, I scheduled a high school for many, many years, very familiar with the ins and outs of high school scheduling and the pushes and pulls on that. And when you're talking about a smaller population and you're still trying to have a big range of courses that you're offering, like we are here at this high school, there are pushes and pulls and choices that have to be made because, because of our size. A bigger school would have the ability to have more staff and have more flexibility in its scheduling than we do. And I know Brian Menegony works very, very hard to try to maximize that schedule and get kids in, but those things do happen. And when I was scheduling, we would call them alternate courses, so we would say to kids, if you're not gonna get your first choice, what do you, want your alternates to be? So that the system would feed them into those, and they wouldn't get nothing, and end up with their seventh choice. But, but they wouldn't necessarily get their first choice, and that was in a much bigger high school, um, where there was more scheduling flexibility as a result. So I think that's a, certainly an important thing to explore, you know, what do we want for our kids in terms of course access? And why are we able to produce that or not, and what would we have to change to increase those percentages?
Do, alright, so do we wanna get back to this part?
Sure, yeah, so why don't we take a look at another, um, observation? So Michelle, your group, do you wanna share what you observed?
We noticed that mathematical growth.
And the ELA.
Is, is bad, bad, lower, we didn't get on all the points, we only got two points for every level except for all high school students. So all elementary school students, the lowest performing elementary school students, and the lowest performing high school students. And then what did you say about?
Are you looking at achievement?
Growth.
Oh, growth, okay.
Growth.
Yep. And then, there also seems to be under achievement in the elementary school for all students and for the lowest performing students. We're not really getting the points there either.
You're talking about in math, growth specifically?
Yeah, in math, yeah.
Okay. And what's an observation?
Yeah, that was ours also, um, and we were concerned, or curious, is, when was the new curriculum, um, implemented?
Uh, it was not adopted until this year, so this was on a prior curriculum.
Okay, right, that was our question, and also.
And middle school was two years ago, or last year also?
Um, everything new in math was adopted this year, so K eight this year, this past year was all new testing, so the twenty nineteen results will reflect the first year of implementation of that math. This, all of this data is prior to our adopting the new math resources. So I think what you're seeing here, you know, if we were to make some inferences or ask some questions about this, we've, we've asked some questions on here, and I'm just watching the clock, because I don't wanna keep you here all night, but, um, the, uh, that's something that we were concerned about as well, why aren't we seeing that growth in math? Why aren't we seeing the achievement? Our math achievement is lower than our ELA achievement, and why is that happening? Um, one of the things that we determined, um, when we were looking at our data, is that we were seeing our performance in math, particularly at the middle school, was, um, really not where we wanted it to be, and we started to dig down into why, and we discovered that Big Ideas, which was the curriculum that we were using, Ed Reports has its alignment to the Common Core like incredibly low. And so we were using a math resource that just wasn't well-aligned to the standards and wasn't teaching kids in the way that they were being tested or being expected to know that material, and that was a huge gap. So what we adopted this past year, um, is the Elastor Math Curriculum, which has the highest Ed Report ratings, um, and is, in my opinion, a fabulous curriculum. It really kind of gets at math instruction in the way that we would want kids to learn it, and then you all experienced that. Actually, when Christine and Jen came in the spring and walked you through, and how different that math feels, perhaps than how any of us had learned mathematics. So I'm really pleased with the curriculum resources that we adopted, because I feel like they are really in the spirit of what the Common Core is expecting us to do, and are giving kids a very different kind of experience with mathematics than they've had historically. Um, I, I think the change at elementary is less so, because Christine Fisher had really done a nice job of helping teachers to grow their pedagogy, but they just didn't have the consistent resource for that vertical alignment. Um, but still, having, so having a resource that really supports the type of pedagogy that they've been learning about has been wonderful this past year. The teachers are pleased to have that resource. Um, and so that's something where, you know, looking at our data, we were like, yes, this is a problem, and how are we going to tackle that? So it kind of gives you some insight into what goes on behind the scenes when we're looking at data like this and, and figuring out where we would go next with our priorities. Okay, any final comments about this? Alright, so I'm gonna bring you through this last piece really quickly, because this is going on longer than we anticipated. So the last piece that you have in your packet is the DART data, um, and this is the, the information that you were interested in, Stacy, in terms of comparisons to other districts. So the state did this, this is a CAN report that comes right off, off the website, and basically, they determined, um, based on several variables, that these are the, the districts, the ten other districts that they consider us most similar to. So one of the factors is total enrollment, so the size of the district, um, and the other piece is grade spans, so is it configured similarly? Like are they a K five, six, eight, and nine, twelve like we are, or do they have a different configuration? So most of the school districts here, Masco being an exception, which is a little strange, but, um, but most of these have the same grade span configuration. And then they also look at special populations, so they're looking at the economically disadvantaged percentage, the percentage of students with disabilities, and this percentage of students who are English language learners, and looking for districts that are comparable across all of those variables. And they're saying, so basically you're working with a very similar demographic, how are you doing, and how do you stack up? So you can kind of see how this works. And then below that, you can see it says, select a comparable district, so if there was a different district that we were interested in, we could produce that data. It looks a little different, but we can get it, and we can kind of see if there were other people that we thought would be useful to compare ourselves to. But this is what it, um, what it shows, and we might not consider all of these districts similar to us for a variety of reasons, but they are according to these demographics. And it's who the state is comparing us to when it looks at our results. I think it's really interesting to see that Dover Sherborne is in here, and they're a really useful reference point, because they are typically the top performing district in the state. Year after year, they come in number one, or very close to number one in terms of their MCAS scores. Um, so when we're looking at how we stack up to them, that's sort of like the current ceiling of how people are doing on MCAS. Not to say that we couldn't do that well or better, um, but, but that's kind of where the state is in terms of top level performance at this moment, um, in time. So I'm just gonna give you a few minutes to take a look at this, we're not gonna go through a huge, you know, process here, but just to, what are you seeing? What's jumping out at you? What are you curious about? Um, so maybe take two minutes, talk to your partner, um, and then we'll share out very briefly.
Okay. It's interesting how we, they don't have Manchester Essex as our DART.
Mm-hmm.
Wow, I've never seen that before.
I see. Yeah, yeah. Can we target? Is it possible to target? I can pull out. Mm-hmm. So we're doing good there. I'm sure. Right, right.
Yeah, all of them are for the most part.
Mm-hmm, right. Thank you. Even, even, we're, we're stronger math, we're still. So this is, so that's not a high school.
What's, what's SWD? Is that the sounding configuration?
SWD, yeah. I need a, a little decipher of all this.
Valleys. Yeah, I mean, there, there are learning happened. Where, alright, I think we're done noticing, I'm done noticing, let's go.
Mm-hmm. We'll start with you this time.
I doubt, how long does it take?
I know.
Math, how long does it take? That one is so everybody's so.
Right, just in the interest of time, uh, the data process would say we should not combine observations and inferences, we should keep that separate, but for now, just, because we're just gonna do a quick review. What's really leaping out at you? What sense are you making of that? So if each group could just share something about the data that it noticed, and, um, what, what sense you're making of that, what conclusions you might draw, or questions are you asking about that?
Um, we're not that far behind Dover Sherborne in many areas, which is great. I mean, it's very telling, the numbers that.
Particularly when you look at SGP.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
In most other categories, we're right in the middle, so.
Can you speak up, Vinnie? I can't hear you.
In most other categories, we're right in the middle, or the average compared to everyone.
Mm-hmm.
It seems like the, um, for where it really ultimately affects students in tenth grade, uh, that we are very high, and some of the districts are not. Some of them are eighty-five percent, eighty-seven percent, so that's, you know, means that they have some significant concerns about their students moving on and graduating.
Mm-hmm. Right, other thoughts or observations?
I think the growth average for grades three through, three through eight in the math, just a little bit low com- comparisons, not much. Um, but obviously there's some that are lower.
Okay, okay.
Can I ask, Peg, oh, I'm sorry. Peggy, as an educator, do you see the SGP as the greatest indicator?
I think it's a really important indicator around the value added, right? So, so in terms of like how are we taking where our students are and moving them along? I mean, as long as our SGP is within the forty to fifty range, we're moving them along at the rate that the state would be expecting us to move them along. I don't like to see things in the forties, I like to see them at least in the fifties. I'd love to see them over sixty, cause that means we're really pushing our district, and we're really, um, you know, out, we're outpacing our, our, our own expectations, shall we say, in terms of where kids can be, and it shows that we're really doing good things with them in the classroom. So I find that that is a really good indicator, it's usually very much tied to our overall performance, because you'll see gains. If you're seeing good SGP, you're also probably gonna see some good gains in the absolute achievement as well. Um, but it is, sometimes when you see lower achievement, but you're seeing good growth, that means that we're closing that gap. And over time, you'll start to see higher achievement as well, so then that, that's a good sign. I think it's important to look at both of them, one is not necessarily more important than the other, but I think the SGP is very revealing about the type of work that we're doing.
As a layperson, should they be looking at one over the other? I mean, or, or could, could they identify, or, I don't, identify is not the right word, but is, is one more?
School.
Yeah, thank you.
More important than the other?
Fifty cent word.
So, so the one that they're held accountable for, um, the child is held accountable, or is their achievement? So at the high school, they don't necessarily care about growth, they care where you're meeting or exceeding. So if you're looking at like how they're held accountable for themselves, then you would want to see that meeting or, or exceeding. But I think as a parent, seeing that SGP is really important as well, because it kind of gives, it kind of helps you see that your child is making really great progress, right? Or the opposite could be true. So we're seeing average SGPs here, but we can see, like, within our population, we could have a kid with a ninety-nine and another kid with a two, right? So if you're thinking about, like, the, the ni- the kid at ninety-nine, that's something to be really proud of, even if those scores aren't perfect yet. Um, because that means that child is really, really growing. Like that's something you might wanna really see in a special ed student, for example. Their overall achievement might not be as high as some of their peers, and that's a function of the disability that they have, but if their growth is really high, that make, means that they're making great gains, and they're closing those achievements, and so that's something really important to pay attention to. So as a parent, I would be interested in both of those scores, but for different reasons. I would want to see my child doing well in both, because that tells me that, you know, that they're all, on all accounts, that they're making the kind of progress that we'd wanna see. Thank you. Any other questions or observations? So, okay, um, in terms of, um, I'm not going to do this, we're just gonna go through that quickly. So thinking about how the district uses MCAS data, so we do a kind of analysis like you're looking at here, the very first thing we do, the second it's out, the, the day the data was released, I spent like four hours in my office downloading reports and looking at how all this works, because I kind of wanted to see how we did on this data. And we're all very interested in those overall percentages, of course, the, um, curriculum person that I am, I'm already like into the strand analysis and the data analysis and, and item analysis, and that's something that I'll be doing with teachers in the coming weeks, that we actually get together in grade level groups, and we take a look at this data and go through, and we spend some of our time in the day really looking closely at the data, and some of our time planning. So now that we've seen this data, what are we going to do differently, or how are we gonna support students differently as a result? So that's a day that we spend together, really, um, taking a deep dive. And then individual student data is used to help make decisions about what children might need in terms of intervention. So we have, um, at the elementary level, Title I intervention, and we look at a variety of variables, a lot of local benchmarks, but for fourth and fifth graders, MCAS is one of the factors that we consider to determine who might be in need of that type of intervention. So those are the different ways in which we make use of MCAS and the data, um, you, MCAS data to improve our overall student achievement. And questions, so we've been asking them all the way along, but are there other questions that you have?
One thing before the questions, I did, um, go back into our agenda and link Peggy's presentation, so that you have it for your reference, if you wanna go back through and look at it. It's already there.
I'm on the Desi website, looking at the DART, but how come I, I can't see Hamilton Wyndham, you know, the Miles River? Would it be under M or would it be under H? Maybe it's under H.
You have to scroll down.
It's a Miles River.
Or alphabetically below, um, municipals.
Oh, thank you.
If it's by number, well.
So there's also, when you're, you're searching the state website, there's, you can search for district level, and you can search for school level. And so there's two different, like, pulldowns to select schools versus district.
Yeah, and it's almost.
And we're only looking at district tonight.
It's almost easier to go to district first and then.
And then make out the schools, yeah.
Then it narrows the choices.
And just be mindful, you might feel like you selected a district, or the district or the school, you have to press that little orange arrow next to it for it to actually load the data.
Right.
Thank you, good tip, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much, this, I, I think this was great and very helpful, super informative.
Good information.
Good, and so on Tuesday, you can be like the nerd like me, right on the state website, taking a look at what's happening with all the state comparisons, so, um, but that'll be available. So any report that you've seen tonight, you'll see the twenty nineteen version of that on the state website on Tuesday, and any parent or any community member can access that data, so.
And when will the, I'm sorry.
You're probably asking a question, go ahead.
Uh, when will the parents get their results in the mail?
Um, usually it's a few weeks later, I think, that they, they mail out all of the individual reports to the schools, and then the schools distribute those to the, to the families.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Alright, have a good evening, what's left?
Thank you, Peggy.
Thank you, thanks, Peggy.
That went a little longer than expected, so.
We're gonna wrap it up quick.
We're gonna wrap it up quick. Um, do you wanna just finish out the superintendent's report, or do you wanna go back to where we were?
Um, sure, so I will, um, do a little intro and then let Vinnie speak about our two latest hires. Um, as Peter pointed out, um, Vinnie has been my right-hand man in helping appoint, um, or actually interview, recruit, interview, and retain, um, two more really highly qualified candidates. We feel very fortunate again that we had, um, outstanding candidate pools for both our accounting, our accountant and payroll director, which is Vinnie's replacement. Um, we don't need any jokes about how great Vinnie is, or how big the shoe's heart of a, um, just kidding. Um, so Vinnie will introduce that person, and then we also, this week, um, signed a contract with a new HR benefits and payroll coordinator who, or administrator, who, um, Vinnie can also speak briefly about.
Awesome.
So the HR and benefits coordinator we had was Lisa Colts. We took her from the Andover Public Schools, where she serves now. Before that, she was in Beverly for, I believe, at least four years. Um, she comes with a strong background from HR and is a Beverly resident. And for our accounting position, we took Larry Fleming from Manchester Essex, and they are pretty sad that he's leaving, which makes us pretty excited.
This sounds like the NFL like, you know.
We keep trading people back and forth.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what's Larry's last name?
Fleming.
Okay.
Uh, Lisa starts on October fourth, uh, first, I'm sorry, and Larry starts on the third. And I can't wait for either of them to come.
Did you combine positions, is that what I understood?
We did, we actually, um, eliminated two part-time positions and one full-time position in the transition to these two full-time positions. So, um, we had two part-time HR folks who were, um, trying to fill that role, and it just became very clear that we were having gaps in onboarding folks and, um, not providing the customer service that we really wanted to, not because of the people in the role, they were working really hard and doing great things, but more just the function of the two part-time positions were, and so, um, we eliminated both of those to create the HR benefits position as a full-time position. And then after we posted that, we actually learned that our payroll coordinator was retiring, and then Vinnie and I started thinking really creatively about, is this an opportunity for us to restructure a bit, create some redundancy, um, find some cost-saving measures? So part of our strategy was. So part of our strategy was not only to fill these positions, but to think about the timing of filling the positions and trying to be as fiscally responsible as we could, and find some cost-saving measures while also ensuring that we have the right people in the right roles. I don't know if you want to add to that.
So payroll's kind of being split up between the district accountant and the new HR, so both of them will be handling it together.
And right now, all those positions are vacant, and so Vinnie is stepping up and filling in for the accountant, the assistant superintendent of finance, the payroll coordinator, the HR and benefits.
And the assistant, administrative assistant.
To himself. So he has.
Five times the pay.
Do you have a little couch in that office?
If anyone has any free time.
Called training.
Those were vacant positions. We didn't lay anybody off.
No, we did not.
There were openings, and we combined them.
The one part-time HR position, we did eliminate.
Wow. Thank you for double time and triple time and.
Yes.
I hate to see anyone laid off.
Twenty-four seven time, too.
Both of you really have filled, it looks like, you know, it's all filled up now with all the positions. I mean, I'm sure there might still be some things you're looking at, but you had a lot of work to do since July. And Vinnie even in a shorter time to ramp up to the position and hire your replacement, which I'm sure was hard to do.
All right. Congratulations.
One more to go.
One more to go, and then we could possibly schedule an open house, like, think in November?
Well, we will have the whole leadership, the whole leadership team will be here at our next school committee meeting to present the strategic blueprint, and also the Wenham Town Administrator will be here, so that will be quite a social gathering.
Should we make that an open house, or invite people then maybe?
Sure, I'd love to talk a little bit more about what your vision is for that, but we can definitely talk about it and really promote it, and maybe even ask folks to come a few minutes before the meeting starts.
Well, that's what I was thinking, if we did, you know.
Thinking like, when we do the retirement reception type thing?
Like a retirement reception, just, you know, like, just an open house, just for a short time before our meeting, and then to introduce some people, you know, invite people from town, citizens, parents, or whoever.
Is that October 1st?
Second.
Second.
Sure, we'll see if we can get everybody coordinated.
I was just thinking, you know, we've talked about it in past.
Yep. The other thing I just wanted to remind folks of, and I should say, there's two parent events coming up, and I will be sending a reminder out tomorrow. We have our Alice Parent Information Night coming up next Wednesday, September 25th. The reminder flyer, we put a save the date out a couple of weeks ago, the reminder flyer will go out again, and we're also going to send some FAQs out, so hopefully that will pique people's curiosity, and we're really hoping for a good turnout, because this is the year we train staff last year in administration, this is the year we train students, but we want parents to know kind of what the plan is before we get that ball rolling. And then also, we have our first, I think it'll be an annual wellness fair coming up on October 5th, which is a Saturday. It's going to be an amazing event. The Wellness Committee has worked really hard on this, and there's been all kinds of promotion on social media and home to parents, but it really is a community event. So if you know folks who are just interested, there's going to be, I think there's over 30 vendors, if I'm remembering.
A little less, I think 25.
25 vendors who will be there to address a wide variety of both preventative wellness, but also therapies and things like that, so it's going to be a really fun event. I know that I'm looking forward to it.
And Danielle Petucci will be in after the event to tell us about and give us an update.
Awesome. That's great.
Is the Alice presentation going to be televised or recorded?
I can look into that. I don't think we were actually planning to televise or record it. Part of what we're trying to be mindful of is what's need-to-know for our families versus what's public information for everyone in the community. And so we really want this, this is not a community event, this is a parent event. It really is about them understanding, you know, what we're doing and why we're doing it. And so I don't think that the committee will feel comfortable televising it, because we were even trying to take extra safety measures in terms of who comes to the event, is it open, do we have folks check in, do we not? And so I think it's, what we do plan to do is survey folks who have come to the event to find out how useful it was and get ideas. If we need to do this three or four times, we're open to doing it, just to be accessible for families.
Because that would be my concern, is where it's only one time, you might have.
Yeah. And we're interested in thinking, like, what are other ways that people like to get this kind of information? We think that face-to-face is going to be really important, so folks can have their questions answered, and our public safety folks will also be there, so it's a good chance to connect with them and just build that relationship with people who are all committed to their, the community's safety and security. That's all I have for tonight.
Are we going to do C? Or are we going to do the different data?
Handbook changes?
So the student handbook changes, the document that's leaked into the agenda includes updates from each of the schools. That's really, for your information, the, obviously, the handbooks have already been published. Our plan moving forward is to share that information with you in late May, early June, so that you have it before it's formally being printed. Most at the elementary schools, there were very few changes. There were some changes. We're really trying to discourage vaping and other unhealthy practices at the middle school and high school level, but you have all of that for your review, and if you have any specific questions, please feel free to email me, and I'll be happy to get the answers for you.
Thank you. So I still have several questions about how one of those changes is operationalized, and if policies are needed to allow that to happen.
Okay. We can even invite the administrators to come to maybe our next policy meeting, if that feels appropriate.
Do you mean the next one, or the next one? I guess one next week, and then there's one in the future.
Probably in the future, the third one, the seventh one.
All right. So that brings us to the policy committee update. There's like, an entire section of policies here for a first reading. There was a lot, well, I don't know about everybody else, but for myself personally, it was very difficult to get the documents this week before the weekend, or over the weekend, so. It is a first reading. Do people feel like they have had adequate time to read these and would like this to be our first reading? I guess I would like feedback on that.
To tell you the truth, because I couldn't get the packet back, or get a packet before Friday, or to read it over the weekend, I haven't been able to read the policy packet, because there was quite a lot of information. Everything else I was able to pull up, so I didn't have a chance to write any questions for any of the first reading for policy, other than, you know, I can see what was redlined, and I think... I don't have enough information to even say it for a first reading personally, but I don't know if other people.
I'm in the same boat as Stacy. Is that going to put you back? So we're going to take, so we could make this a first reading, and then you could bring things to the next one, but then at the second reading, if there was questions, then it would go back and forth, so we're okay with making a motion to the table.
I think you first have to make a motion to approve, and then somebody has to amend the motion to table it.
Great.
Got to put it on the table to take it off the table.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what?
You're going to make a motion to approve this.
Okay. I move to accept the first reading of the Hamilton, I move that the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee accept the first reading of Section B of our policies.
Second. Would anybody like to discuss this tonight, or would somebody like to make a motion to table?
I, I mean, if you could, I would like to know a little bit more about these policies. If you could just kind of highlight them possibly, Michelle, or what changes, or how you went about, because there's some things that are, I'm looking at, just, I guess, there's an executive session that's, has two pages worth of redlining, three, there's a lot of redlining. So that's why I, I don't know if we should table it and then come back with each question, but there's a lot of redlining.
So redlining can indicate that we struck all of our policy and replaced it with the MASCE's policy, or it could, very little wordsmithing has been done by us. It's mostly been striking out, either striking out policies that are in, well, that's very rare. We've stricken a few policies out of our manual, because we felt we didn't need them anymore. More likely.
Or they were in bylaws or laws.
Or they're, yeah, the, more likely, we've accepted the MASCE's policy verbatim. Haven't had too much that we've really changed, to be honest with you. We do have things where we've added different references, so.
More inclusive language.
Different, what do you call those things?
Legal references.
We also have found some weird leftover things about, you know, policies had to indicate if there was any financial implications. We were like, this is weird, so we just got rid of those kind of things. This school committee evaluation, it's something that we had, but it didn't really, it existed somewhere else, so we struck it, and we replaced it with this one. So, old one, new one. Yeah, this legal status one, it was like, long and wordy, and it was weird, and we replaced it with one that actually came from the Essex Tech for our legal status. School committee duties, we weren't going to take, we took that out, because it was covered in our bylaws.
But you adopted MASCE.
But we adopted the MASCE.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, majority of it is replacing it with MASCE's policy, which was more clear.
And then you see, like, school committee resignation. We didn't take the MASCE's version, because it's in our bylaws, this unexpired term fulfillment. We didn't take the MASCE's, because it's in our bylaws.
Okay. And that's what I want to understand a little bit better, what some of this was meaning, because pages of redlining, it just doesn't make sense.
Right here, MASCE recommends this policy, it's in our bylaws, so we're not doing it.
Okay.
Same thing here, our school committee organizational meeting, it's in our bylaws. And that was, school committee officers is also outlined in our bylaws, so there was no need to adopt that. Same thing with the officers, same thing with the duties of the vice president, same thing with the working group organization, same thing with the subcommittees, which is kind of what we talked about tonight, that that's addressed, how we would do it in our bylaws.
Yep. But then we did adopt the MASCE's advisory committee.
Advisory, yeah, which would be things like, the CPAC, or if we were to, the turf field is kind of advising us, sort of, but we're not, we're not appointing them.
Okay. Yep. I think that's what I really want to find out, even though I was like, looking, I just didn't understand.
This was a change. We reverted back to the MASCE regarding school councils. We reverted so that the, at the secondary level, the school committee shall approve the student handbooks, which is redlined there. School attorney, we felt like this were, I think we felt like this sentence was redundant. So we just took that out. We also felt like we had, the MASCE's wasn't set up for a regional, so this said that you could use town council. We can't really, because we're not, we're a regional, so we eliminated that. School committee meetings, that was in our bylaws. Same thing with these, it's in our bylaws. Executive sessions, oh, we replaced whatever we had with what the MASCE had. We felt like listing the actual reasons why you can have a, no, we had that too. I don't know why we changed that. I just liked the way it was formatted better. I don't know. Ours had something in it.
Okay.
I would just check, did we want to not take, to keep ours and not MASCE? Is that what that one is, for executive sessions?
Could be.
BEC?
It could be. I can't remember. All this agenda stuff, agenda format, the MASCE had recommendations, all addressed in our bylaws. Same thing with the Roberts Rule of Orders, that's in our bylaws. Our method of voting is in our bylaws. Some districts don't have bylaws, that's where, it sounded like we were making that, so they have policies, we just have this one big document. Same thing with minutes. We left unchanged, except for this, participating in a school committee meeting, it was weird. There was this, like, there's no financial implications associated with this policy. We're like, that's nice, so we got rid of that. And we actually kind of kept our policy instead of the MASCE's, because it was brief and to the point, and worked.
What would happen if you didn't take out the financial implications, things like that?
Well, why is it there?
Yeah, but, so it doesn't, it doesn't.
Yeah, other than to cloud.
Just, okay, perfect, yep.
I mean, sure, you could leave it in there, but then you would want to be consistent, and you should go back and do it for every policy, and I don't like doing that.
I think the idea is always to streamline your policy manual as much as you can, so that it's readable and people actually reference it and use it.
Right.
The remote participation policy, we just updated the law, and then it was supposed to be reviewed one year after its adoption to determine its future use, and that wasn't done, but we are good with it now. And then, let's see, I think, looks like we went without, kind of keeping our policy on policy adoptions. So, we decided to keep, this is a unique policy to us, this conflicts between district policy, collective bargaining agreements, and state federal laws, we decided just to keep it in case there were ever a question. You know, if there was some law that were to be passed that went against our bargaining agreement, we would be like, well, we're sorry, that's the law. We don't anticipate that, but we would have a policy for that. So a while ago, well, while I was on the committee, so in the last three and a half years, we had decided a process for reviewing the policies, and we had listed the order we were going to do them in. But since then, we have hired the MASCE to help us, and so we didn't really need the definition of the order anymore. We're just going to keep up with it, and they're going to help us do that. Policy revision and review. So we got rid of ours and adopted the MASCE's, it looks like.
No, kept yours.
We kept ours.
Edited yours, but.
Edited ours.
Yeah.
Policy dissemination, instead, well, it looks like we took the MASCE. No, we kept ours, because it, well, it says crosshair.
You adopted the school committee review of procedures from MASCE, and then kept our policy dissemination.
Yeah, so we have to keep the, you know, policies have to be somewhere, and then have to be shared, it can't be a secret. All right, so the school committee, staff communications, we know that the policy on staff complaints and grievances won't be this same, we haven't reviewed it yet, but it needs to be referenced in this policy, so we've got this placeholder here, if you want to go back to it. And if we all were to follow at the face of the earth, some committee would come across that and know what to do. And if we all were to follow at the face of the earth, some committee would come across that and know what to do. Looks like we decided to keep ours on the use of electronic messaging by school committee members, which is basically, don't violate the open meeting law.
That's MASCE's, I think.
Why is it crossed out like that?
That's just because when we print it, we're not going to put that in.
Oh, great, okay, okay, perfect. So it is the MASCE's.
Okay.
New school committee orientation, we kind of just, you know, it was the same.
Same as MASCE.
You should get the documents you need. School committee conferences, conventions, and workshops, I think that means, like, you can get paid, well, not you can get paid, but your costs can be covered, is that what's in that one?
Yeah, and we didn't have this policy.
Yeah, so, it was happening, but we didn't have a policy. Okay, so we have this one, so we decided... I don't think we decided that.
Where are you looking?
The one on the school committee member compensation and expenses.
BID?
I don't know, maybe we did decide that in the end.
I think BIBA says you can go and be reimbursed, and this says holds, but, but then it says resolve. Right, so it cross-references BIBA. This is saying that you'll serve without compensation, so BIBA says you'll go to, you'll continue to grow, you'll go to conventions, you'll go to workshops, you'll get reimbursed for any costs incurred. BID says that you'll serve without compensation, with the exception of submitting vouchers or bills for expenses incurred out of specific services that the committee authorizes you to do. So if somebody said...
I don't remember that being what we decided, but...
That's how I remember it.
Is that how you remember it? Perfect, great.
I'm good.
Two more.
We should, that a committee, the committee will annually designate a committee member to serve as its legislative representative, so if we, we as the political body wanted to go and testify at a state house hearing, we would designate a member to do that. So, if we adopt this policy, then we should do that. And, you know, if anybody ends up going to the Congress or whatever, there, we would have designated that person.
Or with MASCE or MASs, well, with MASCE, if they have a legislative group, they might meet on, I don't know, Saturdays, to talk about whatever, different bills that are coming up. When the legislature is in session, you might have someone from the committee that you want to be a part of that, so that you're getting just in time.
Yeah, we used to have someone, and then it went to the superintendent, and then...
Well, and we decided that, in fact, the superintendent does have that role as an educational leader, to go and testify with their experience. But, you know, there may be a reason why members should go, and if there was, that we would designate that person, that... And then, school committee membership, this says that, like, we can belong to, like, the National School Board Association, but... You did, that's great. Okay, I'm good with that. So there's, like, changes are not monumental in scope? If, if we do make monumental changes, we'll try and point them out to you? If we remember, because there's so many of them going through.
As our first reading.
As our first reading, to know, so we understood, because even if you go over this information, all that redlining, you don't quite understand until it's explained to you.
Right.
So I'm good with this first reading.
It's hard, I totally understand why it's hard.
Thank you for doing that, Michelle.
So you can either vote or amend the motion.
Yeah, so do we want, so, so, is there anyone who would like to amend the motion to make this a first reading? Realizing that what you are just saying is, there's no comments for us to consider. So that means the second reading will come with no changes. The other option would be to amend it.
To table it.
To table it, which would mean, if you needed time to review it, and you wanted to give any feedback before our next meeting, you could, and then, the only difference would be that we would have a first reading and then a second reading. You could still give comments at the next meeting, before the second reading, it just means the public wouldn't have the benefit before the actual approval, but they aren't running in here in droves to comment on this.
I'm fine with approving the first reading.
Okay, so, okay, so we'll vote to, the motion to approve this as our first reading. All in favor? Great. Okay, so I'm going to check that one out. I only see list items and point of contact for future meetings as remaining on the agenda.
Okay, I have a couple. Do we want, I'm going to ask Julie about this. Do we want Policy Group to look at Policy D4002? Or is it okay? Or do we need to think about that for future? That's the one pertaining to fundraising, or I think it's D4002, or the one for advertising is fundraising, etc. Do we need to look at that one?
That's a great recommendation. I think it would be great for Policy to look at all of those policies that we shared at Capital last night, so I can share that packet with Michelle.
That's the only one, I was like trying to look in here real fast with the numbers, so if we could take a look at that. So, that helps us with our subcommittee.
Yep, perfect.
So we've delayed reviewing D to give Vinnie time to get up and rolling, before we reviewed all the finance ones, because we would like his input.
Yep.
But we'll look at that list and see if we can, you know, just because we can't do the whole section, it doesn't mean we can't do pieces, so, that's fine.
So I'm just asking if we could help with those pieces, because if we want to move the turf information forward, that's a big part, integral part of the MOU.
Right, nope, I understand, okay.
I appreciate that. And then, the other thing is, I don't know if this is the time to ask, but do we, have we any dates or thoughts about the school committee for school visits yet?
We don't have specific dates yet.
Okay.
I would like to get some clarification as to, I, I, it's unclear to me whether we wanted them during the day or after school hours, if we were going to build relationships and be visible with staff and students, or if we were looking at facilities for capital needs and things like that. Because I remember we talked about the timing of that being dependent upon what the purpose was.
And we've got several, several people, some, I, I'm like trying to think, there's only...
I thought it was for looking at the capital needs.
And we said 3:30, right?
We're saying, like, 3:34, oh, yeah, 3:30, because then we could still possibly see some of the principals around.
Okay.
Gave people time to get in from...
I will bring a schedule to our next meeting.
Yep, and I wasn't trying to rush the open house to be October 2nd. I just want to, you know, I was just thinking if, you know, we want to get, invite even like board of selectmen, you know, just that communication, and one of our, didn't we have as one of our goals possibly to get people more involved earlier on? And to just meet the new, you know, leadership, meet whatnot, so I just thought, and I'm not thinking anything extravagant at all. It's just kind of like more of a meet and greet type thing, you know, before a meeting. Cookies and some water. And lastly, sorry, could we put pages and exhibits back on here? Because it's very hard on the agenda to try and go through this, when we're going through, and when Michelle's going through, I'm trying to go through it here. It would be very helpful to have that back.
The page numbers were an oversight, they should definitely be on here. The idea is that eventually, you're able to have your iPad, and you can click on the exhibit as she's talking to it, but page numbers are still going to be necessary. So I made a note of that earlier, to make sure we add those back.
And then I just noticed a couple of things on the packet that shouldn't be in there. There was some minutes that got put in here. At least I have it.
I lost track. I've got some in there. I lost track of them.
Anyways, that's it, sorry.
Okay, there's some in the back, okay. Recently, Eric mentioned something about NIESK. Are we going to get in an email to parents, are we, can we get an update on where we are on that at some point?
Yes.
And, I would be, I would be interested in seeing, and it's not at the next meeting necessarily, but a comparison of the, our high school course catalog compared to the courses that were offered. Like, are ninety-five percent of the courses that are offered actually running? Or is it fifty percent, or is it, you know, we don't really know? And I, and it may, and it kind of goes to that zero, and that zero might, may or may not be a zero on Tuesday, so.
Okay.
Or this is a zero, that'll be interesting. Okay, is, any, so what does the point of contact mean?
That's just, I'm noting who recommended that for a future agenda, so that way, if I have a question when I'm putting it on the agenda, I make sure that I'm putting the right thing on the agenda. So, the idea between this was so that we don't get into discussions about the future agenda items, but it's just like Stacy said, she wants the turf policies at the next policy meeting. So-and-so said this, so that way we can be efficient.
Is there any other business that needs to be conducted? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move that we adjourn at 10 o'clock.
Second, thank you, Michelle. All in favor?
Thank you.